Good evening, everyone. My name's Doug Chapman. I'm Mayor of the City of Clarence. And it's my pleasure to welcome you all tonight to this formal council meeting. Before proceeding, I'd like to ask the members present to stand for the council prayer. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vouchsafe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the City of Clarence. Amen. I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight, and pay respects to elders past and present. And also advise everyone present that we are recording this meeting and it's broadcast live on YouTube. And the link and the agenda papers are on council's website. Thank you. Clear the meeting open. Note that there are no apologies, but I do ask the Aldermen for any conflicts of interest for them or closest associate. There being none, thank you. I'd like to move now to the start items. There's a number of items there early in the meeting, which we can deal with in one omnibus motion. And I'll go through each one by one. Firstly, a confirmation of the minutes for the ninth of February, as circulated, be taken, as read and confirmed. No comments on the previous minutes. Mayor's communication. I have circulated a copy of Mayor's and Deputy Mayor's diary for official events. Item four, the council notes the workshops conducted on fifteenth and twenty-second of February and the agenda briefing on the twenty-sixth of February. A tabling of petitions. General Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one electronic petition received today. The petition is two hundred and fifty-six signatories requesting council to reconsider the proposal to request the Minister for Planning to extend the urban growth boundary within the Southern Tasmanian Regional Danger Strategy to include the land of Fifty-Two Richardson's Road, Sanford. And prior to reconsidering the proposal, council to undertake broad consultation within the Lorddale-Stanford community, to ascertain community views in relation to the proposed extension of the UGP as a compiling petition then.
Thank you. Any other petitions from the floor? Item ten, reports from outside bodies. Coping refused disposal site joint authority. I note that the December quarterly report is pending. Alderman Walker, is there anything you wish to add?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Nothing to report in regards to the Tasmanian Water Corporation. And the Greater Hobart Committee included in the agenda is a communique from our last sixteenth of February meeting. Moving on to item ten point two, reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies. Are there any reports? Alderman Walker.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have the minutes of the Clarence Positive Aging Advisory Committee for the seventeenth of December and special committee meeting of the twenty-first of January.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm deputy chair of the Tracks and Trails, and I would seek if the chair of the Tracks and Trails is prepared to present the minutes of the Tracks and Trails Advisory Committee meeting of the fifteenth of December, 2020. If not, I present the minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman James.
I haven't actually, we haven't actually approved those minutes to be sent out at the moment, Mr. Mayor, so I would say that it's imperative to do that at the moment.
Well, as long as they're noted as draft.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other reports? In that case, item ten, reports of officers, weekly briefing reports, that council notes the information in the weekly briefing reports for the eighth, fifteenth and twenty-second of February. And finally, item eleven point two, I note that there are no petitions to be determined as a result of previous council meetings. If I could have someone move in second that all the officers' recommendations be adopted, thank you, Alderman Blomby, second, Alderman Pears. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you.
I've prehended, Mr. Mayor, before we move on, would the petition, would it be possible for the petition to be circulated around the order?
Sure. Thank you, General Manager. Now moving back to item seven, public question time. There are no public questions on notice and answers. We do have an answer to a previous question taken on notice from Mrs. Joad. It's included, the answer's included in the agenda, so I suppose we take that as read. We have three questions without notice. General Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first question without notice is from Mrs. Joanne Marsh of Bellre. Mrs. Marsh says, "A new pedestrian safety sign has been installed at the Howard Road slash Booker Highway intersection. It flashes for about ten seconds when the button is activated and reads 'give way to pedestrians'. Is it possible for council engineers to consider installing a similar pedestrian safety device at the intersection facing the cars turning left from Kangaroo Bay Drive into Rosney Hill Road, where a similar pedestrian safety issue exists?" We believe the council will take that on notice. Thank you. The second question is from Mr. Michael Gied of Bellre. Mr. Gied's question is, "Could the General Manager give us an update on the pier slash breakwater and if the construction will exceed the budget?" We believe, Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Graham to respond to that.
Through Mr. Mayor, we understand from the contract he's intending to finish the Bellre Public Pier this month. And in terms of the budget, there's, the contractor's variation claims are still to be resolved under the contract in terms of whether they're accepted or not. So I'm not in a position to advise in relation to the budget at the present time, but will so to the Alderman in due course.
Thank you.
And the third question there, actually two questions, come from Miss Jenny McLeod of South Arms. The first question reads, "In recent months, three properties have sold in Calvin Place, backing onto the skate park in record time and at record prices. Will the council acknowledge the skate park is a community asset adding to property values and not detracting from values, as had been argued by some? And the construction of an earthbird may adversely impact adjacent property values." What a good question. Mayor, I'm unable to answer that question because it requires being speculated. The second question is, "The proposed development includes an unsafe corridor and pocket preventing safe access for girls and women to this space. In an environment where all levels of government have been questioned about safe environments for women, does the Clarence City Council really want to be seen facilitating an infrastructure bill that limits passive surveillance to the side and therefore safe access for women and girls at the skate park? The response to their question is, 'Council officers will consider all aspects of any design, including safety. This is a standard part of all design work for council.'"
Thank you. Moving on to deputations by members of the public. General Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. With your leave, I actually have six deputations, but the first one is very short. So if it's acceptable, I would like to read six tonight.
Thank you.
The first deputation is from Mr. Scott Spanton in respect to the development proposal for Thirty-Past Road, Restaurant and Takeaway, a drive-through facility. Mrs. Spanton says, "Thank you for considering our application for McDonald's at Gleat Hill Village. I won't bore you with a long speech because..." Sorry. "I won't bore you with a long speech because there is nothing here, because nothing here should really be a surprise. I think we have been as open as possible in acknowledging and dealing with the more contentious points of this application and have involved the community as much as humanly possible. Council staff have been excellent to deal with, and we agree with their recommendations. I look forward to watching the proceedings online and then getting on with building the centre, which at this stage is on track for April, May this year, and opening mid to late next year." The next deputation is from Preston Clonier regarding Fifty-Two Richardson's Road. "I'm writing to express my disappointment at the voting outcome of council meeting of the ninth of February, 2021. While a majority of councils decided to push for a review of the urban growth boundary, it is counter to the very sound reasons set out by the manager at City Planning at page two hundred and two of council's agenda. It was, it's my view that council should not be supporting zoning changes without first consulting the community. The agenda also included a detailed development proposal showing a hundred and forty-seven small blocks of land. Agreed that the land is privately owned and the owner is entitled to pursue development in some way, but under the proposal, it's very likely that significant wildlife habitat will be lost, as if there were not, as if there were not already large numbers of animals killed on our roads every night. Shouldn't the natural tree skyline of Richardson's Hill be considered? This is an important aspect of the horizon view from anywhere on the beach. On the seventeenth of February, 2021, ABC News reported on Tasmania's booming cities. An important takeout of the story was, 'Every new housing development will move more cars on the road. Experts such as Professor Jason Byrne were planning laws that encourage higher density housing development and so as closer to employment centres instead of suburban outskirts.' Tasmania is known for its clean and green credentials. This is what attracts visitors to our shores. If we simply let rampant urban growth go unchecked, wrecking the natural environment, then we will ruin the very beautiful, unique offering that people's minds are compelling about Tasmania. Other objections to the proposal could be school capacity, water, sewerage and road infrastructure. Often overlooked in progress is the urgent consideration. My wife and I have urged you to review and reverse the decision you have made about Fifty-Two Richardson's Road. We settled in Lordordale because it's so nicely positioned on the cusp of urban and rural life. Please don't let it simply become this sprawling suburb of Hobart." The next deputation is from Eileen Peterson, also in relation to Fifty-Two Richardson's Road. "I'd like to voice my opinion on the motion eleven point three point six that was passed at the last council meeting on the ninth of February, 2021, with regards to pushing the government to extend the urban growth boundary to include Fifty-Two Richardson's Road, Sanford. Firstly, I believe something as significant as this proposal most definitely should be put out to public consultation. Being a long-term resident of Lordordale, forty-six years in fact, I think I am able to say that both new roads will most definitely be heavily impacted with the extra traffic created by a new subdivision on Richardson's Hill. This street already has numerous vehicles consistently parked down Bayside making for a very hazardous situation. Residents of Bayside Drive, such as myself, are most upset with the idea that our quiet enjoyment of our surrounding bushland and all the habitat that goes with it will be gone forever. We purchased our land with the understanding that the urban growth boundary ended at our back fence. In our case, we built our home at the back of our block, being an internal block so that we were away from the street and any subsequent neighbourhood noise. Due to the slope of the hill, we are faced with the possibility of having neighbours looking down into our backyard, clothesline, our granddaughter's room, our dining room patio and barbecue area, making us feel as if we're living in a fishbowl. I am bewildered at the mention of needing so much more housing in Lordordale when there is a unit at fourteen Bayside Drive, the subdivision of an existing one over block which had an existing house, which is sitting empty. It was for sale for quite some time. It finally sold and is now up for rent. It still sits empty after many poor months. If, as mentioned in item one of your motion, there is an urgent need for housing, then why is this brand-new residence sitting vacant? There is a human side to the decisions made by council. I urge you to reconsider the decision regarding the urban growth boundary." The next deputation is from Mary Anne Evans, also in relation to Fifty-Two Richardson's Road. "I'm writing to express my opposition to Clarence City Council's decision made in regard to the urban growth boundary for the area based at Fifty-Two Richardson Road, Sanford. I am a resident of Bayside Drive in Lordordale. I was not made aware of this proposal prior to the meeting, and nowhere on this agenda item does it mention Lordordale. So I do not believe that I was given opportunity to voice my concerns or be consulted in regard to this matter. I believe that I and other residents are entitled to be made aware of and consulted prior to such a decision being made. The description on the agenda certainly made sure that Lordordale residents were not privy to the meeting agenda and its impacts. I note with concern that council staff recommended that the proposal be rejected. You have ignored them without making sure you have all of the information required to make this decision. Alderman then Newington put forward an alternative motion that the proposal be accepted and that the Minister be requested to review the urban growth boundary. I watched the meeting back on YouTube. As far as I'm aware, this proposed development and this proposed change in the urban growth boundary that council is supporting was not advertised to our community, nor were any of the community consulted about the proposed development or the alternative motion. In my opinion, the council, being elected to represent the rate payers, should have been focused on if the proposal was sound, if a public community consultation had been undertaken, if there was community support, whether this proposal is good for the community based on evidence. These points were not discussed at all. I request that you reverse or rescind your motion until you are undertaken to consult with the community and until you have collected the information required to make an informed decision. I request that council implement and follow good governance practices and processes, and where their processes are not formalised, look at doing so to ensure the community are consulted and due diligence is done." The next deputation comes from Claire Langston, also in relation to Fifty-Two Richardson's Road. "My name's Claire Langston, and I reside as CMIS Corp., Lordordale. I wish to address the council on the proposed change to the urban growth boundary of Fifty-Two Richardson's Road, Sanford. I implore you to oppose this change to the urban growth boundary. We as a community have a strong appreciation of natural values and their contribution to our lifestyle. We also have a strong desire to protect and restore as much natural character as possible. I'm sure you're familiar with how effective our community action was against the proposed development of the Marina-style dwellings in Rouse Bay. The land area in question is currently home to a vast array of flora and fauna. Due to its location behind the Lordordale Softmarsh and bordering onto residential land, the threat to their habitat is of great concern to my family and I. We also have serious concerns about the increase in traffic should further developments go ahead. In your council meeting on February nine, the Alderman commented on land banking and housing affordability when discussing this topic. I would argue that these issues absolutely do not apply to this proposed amendment. I'm deeply concerned that there has been no public consultation regarding changing the urban growth boundary in this incredibly unique area. Please understand that I am not adverse to future development. However, I see no need for such an hideous amount of small allotments to be placed on top of a windy hill that is home to a great deal of wildlife that has absolutely nowhere to go. In conclusion, I ask you to consider the sense in changing the urban growth boundary in an area that does not have the required supporting infrastructure and would impact on residents' current lifestyle and surrounding habitat." The final deputation is from Mr. Nick Masters and Mr. Dean Richards in relation to Fifty-Two Richardson's Road. Mr. Masters and Mr. Richards are proponents. "The application in question is a request to amend the urban growth boundary, an outdated boundary on a map that is restricting the supply of much-needed housing. Council's decision of the ninth of February was only to support the proposed amendment to the boundary as a first step in the process. Our application and supporting documentation confirms that future development could be accommodated by existing services and infrastructure, not how that development would specifically look or work. This is not an application or detail of an actual development proposal. How any future rezoning and development application for a masterplan subdivision might look would be the result of a lengthy consultation process in cooperation between the community, the development team and council. There are strict requirements in the planning scheme and council policies that any future development would also have to meet. It is a, it is very early in the process. As a decision of whether or not to accept the application to amend the growth boundary is still to be determined by the Minister. Council's support of the application is just the first step. Critically though, that first step now provides us with a level of comfort that in principle, council may support additional greenfield development in the region. With that step, we are now in a position to be more, to more confidently start to consult with broader community on how any future development might look and be staged. This process and staging of any future development will take many years. The consultation process will be extensive. We understand that failing to appropriately engage with the community will result in a failed project. There has been a lot of misinformation to date, but as always, for anyone who does not support any development in the area, there will be many opportunities to formally and informally voice their concerns. We believe that consultation and cooperation between the community, development team and council in preparing any future masterplan to the property will ensure that best practice development and significant net community benefit. We grew up in Lordordale and care deeply about the area. Though still very early in the project, following council support, it is now appropriate for broad consultation to start in earnest. Through logistic, though logistics are not yet confirmed, we are hoping to hold a community information session on the weekend of twentieth of March." Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine, motion to notice, Alderman Moller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the motion by name.
Do we have a second there? Alderman Pears, thank you. Alderman Moller.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. This is a simple proposal that council contributes to the cost of replacing a damaged fence that is between its land and that of a private residence. The area's own residential, the council owns the land, has for many, many years, hasn't done anything with it and certainly hasn't taken any moves to exclude the public from it. A, the argument is, is that should we do this, we're setting some sort of precedent. Well, if this, this may set a precedent, but that precedent isn't binding. Every case for an exemption to Clarence Council's practice should be assessed on its own merits and its circumstances. And my case is that I think there, this does require that. This is, does warrant that, but you may not agree, and that is your entitlement. There's a general exemption for, to the fencing policy for playgrounds that have equipment. Although this particular site doesn't have equipment, it is used as a recreational space because right next door are high residential flats, high-density residential flats, which were poorly designed, I think, I believe, in the early seventies. And the only sort of public open space is in a square in the middle of roadways that serve us all the things. Now, that's just an inadequate place to play. So what's happened is that the children and some of the residents use the space next door, council land, as recreation space and it's public land. It's been suggested that the fencing on Waverley, and there's been some concern that by setting this sort of precedent, suddenly council would become responsible. And the example was given of all the houses that back onto Waverley Park, that they would become council responsibility. I would suggest that is just patently false and a scare moment because which of those lots has blocks of flats with, you know, with high density and inadequate recreational space? None. And council manages that boundary vegetation of Waverley Park, something it didn't do on this particular block which caused that particular, the particular damage. I believe that a case has been made for an exemption in this particular case and that council should agree to resolve this long-running issue as a special exemptions for the circumstances outlined.
Thank you, Alderman Pears.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, look, normally, under the Act, I wouldn't be supporting this. I would not be supporting it normally. I went down and had a look, walked right along the spines, and you can see where council have had bushes and trees and some have been cut down along the spines. So I dare say that, you know, council land with the bushes and that have done damage to the spines. There'd be no risk on that, in my opinion. Now, one of the funny things, it's not in the photos in our agenda, but there's a tree in there that's actually in one eighty-one's going over the fence. And I mean, not just a little bit. And I've got a picture on my phone, and I think that's quite funny. We're here, we're saying, "Let's not do anything." In this case, I do think we should have an obligation to do something. I really believe that. And as I said, the further I walked down there, I thought, you know, this is really council's fault. And I know we can get out of a noose anyway and say, oh, yes, the bounding fences, access, we don't have to do a thing. And normally, as I said, I would support that, but in this case, I cannot support it. I think we owe the residents, I think we owe them to do something. I really believe that's the case, Mayor, and I support Alderman Moller's motion.
Thank you, Alderman James. Alderman Newington, then Alderman James.
Look, the situation with, I mean, to say that because the trees have overgrown and damaged the fence, that is justification for us to pay to repair it. But people that have been living there could have quite easily have trimmed that at the same time. So to say, put the whole blame solely on the council for the situation, you know, I don't think is fair. I think it would set an, you know, an unwavable precedent. And I think that, you know, that should be the responsibility of the landowner in this situation as it is in every other situation. So no, I won't be supporting it. And I encourage my old fellow colleagues to do so. You know, like I said, it's not, council haven't caused it. You know, they've had plenty of time to, you know, they should have dealt with it before now if it's damaged their fence. And, you know, I don't think that we should be going down that path.
Thank you, Alderman James.
Just thinking, Mr. Mayor, this issue has been an ongoing issue, if you can say that, over the years in relation to the replacement of fences that abut to private, to council land. The simple fact of the matter is that there is a policy, there is a place within the Act for replacement of fences, obviously, that abuts onto a park, which people can gather, which is part of their recreation pursuit. And by that means, then, council has an obligation to contribute towards that particular park fence. In this particular case, even though it would appear that some of the palings and a couple of the posts from the pictorial exhibit that's been posted in the agenda, it doesn't look to me as if it's in a dilapidated state. It would appear that a couple of the posts, and I may be wrong, I didn't actually go down to see and look at this, unfortunately, but nevertheless, just by the nature of the fence and what it entails, I would have thought that if there were a couple of posts or palings, then the people who are concerned about it may approach council and council, out of its goodwill, may decide that as part of a good community, community benefit, that they may decide to assist with the replacement of the post. Look, I cannot support this. I have had in other instances in this place over the time where I've tried to have fences replaced, et cetera, et cetera, when it's on council land, but not on a park. And this particular general manager's comment is quite relevant because it has been what has been over the last thirty-two years. because it has been what has been over the last thirty years that I've been here anyway. And I wouldn't like to think that this would be an isolated instance because there is that potential for something like this, which could be raised in another place, in this place at another time. And I think that we best go as we've done in the past and therefore I will not be supporting this recommendation.
Thank you. Alderman Kennedy, then Alderman Von Burt.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just one question, I guess. Council and private land, isn't it a shared responsibility?
General Manager.
Thank you, Alderman Kennedy, Mayor. The Boundary Fences Act provides an exclusion to councils for council-owned land. So in ordinary circumstances, it is a shared obligation between property owners with the exception of council-owned land. So the reasoning behind that is that councils throughout the state generally own a lot of land through the area and it is viewed as being uneconomic and an unfair burden on the rate base to make councils liable for that. That rule's been in place since nineteen oh eight.
Alderman Von Burt.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, in Alderman Moulder's write-up reply, I'd like him to explain why council would be replacing. It appears to me that we would be actually taking on the cost of replacing the fence. Whereas, as the general manager has just explained, the Boundary Fences Act actually requires that it's shared the cost. So I would like Alderman Moulder just to clarify what he means by council replaces.
Can I just clarify something there? The Boundary Fences Act actually gives council an exemption from sharing.
It doesn't give council an exemption for everything, I don't believe.
No, but I think that's a point of clarification.
Just on a point of explanation, the Boundary Fences Act talks about local authorities, not councils. So the same applies to all authorities, transnational, transendental.
Thanks, Alderman Moulder.
And also, Mr Mayor, it applies to adjacent to roads and railway corridors. So I would like an explanation as to what's meant by council replaces. Does that mean total, or does that mean sharing the cost? Also, I'm in agreement with the general manager and his explanatory notes. I believe that to set, to actually decide to replace this fence for the people concerned would actually set a precedent and it would be a change to a practice that we have had for a very long time. And once that practice is changed, then other members of the community will see that they are entitled to actually have their fields replaced if they believe that it has been due to councils in capacity to perhaps care for the area around the fence or the fence. So I won't be supporting this particular motion.
Thank you, other speakers. Alderman Wong.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. I wasn't going to contribute to this debate, but like the previous two speakers, I thought the general manager's comments were succinct, clear and provided a really good position as far as professional advice would be. I was concerned with Alderman Moulder's terminology of using scare mugging because I don't think that's the case, this is professional advice. I think we ought to be very careful when we come into this place and start using that sort of terminology when we refer to professional advice. Importantly, Mr Mayor, as providing the professional advice.
On a point of explanation, I was not suggesting that the general manager's comments were scare mugging. What I said was that using an example like Waverley Park was scare mugging. And Waverley Park is mentioned in the general manager's, so I'm not accusing the general manager of it.
Thank you for the personal explanation.
Well, I'm willing to hear that, Mr Mayor, as I'm sure we all are. But as important, I'm sure we'll be, I'm sorry, Alderman.
But would you please, let's defuse the issue. Alderman Wong, would you like to continue, please?
Importantly, the, if I could continue, Mr Mayor, I'd be delighted. Importantly, Mr Mayor, the general manager's comments very clearly state that the council property at one hundred and seventy-nine Clarence Street is not a play park. It is council vacant land and it's not contained any infrastructure provided for use as a community park or similar. So as the previous two speakers said, Mr Mayor, and as were advised, this sets a very dangerous precedent that would have significant consequences for this council and the rate payers of this great city.
Thank you, other speakers. Alderman Walker.
Welcome to the joys of local government. This is the sort of petty friction that really does elevate people's blood pressure and I acknowledge that. But we are, we don't just make our decisions depending on the side of the bed we got out of what we ate for breakfast. It's fettered by legislation, statutes and acts. Now, this one's a classic nineteen oh eight, that is some vintage as far as they go. And I think it's probably well past time for a review, for an upgrade, for a contemporaneous aspect towards it. But that's not what we have before us tonight, we have the nineteen oh eight Act. And as such, I won't be supporting the motion. And as I say, I acknowledge some of the friction and frustration these issues cause and we should always look at how we can rationally reasonably eliminate them. But to do this motion and can we have the power tonight to pass it? When voting that way, one has to take on the potential ramifications and obligations. And I think it wouldn't just be a case of proving that certain plant penetrated between the palings first month of this time. I think it's pretty much an open chance to have an argument that council's in part responsible for, you know, kilometers of fencing that's basically private at the moment. If you walk around the Tonne Hill, I think a few people there might ask me to get involved. Gordon's Hill, obviously, that's the state government, that town, I don't know, we might go. I acknowledge that there's some comments around place, space and amenity, but to live that close to Howard Beach and Wentworth Play Park, which is one of our better ones, we did get the road safety byproduct there eventually, although Alderman wanted to leave it on the table. But that is in close proximity and there would be a lot of people that would be very envious in other suburbs to have such close proximity to those resources right there. So you vote for something, not necessarily always, you know, a hundred percent agreement or a hundred percent comfort with being a yes or a no. I acknowledge there's a few shades of grey, but on balance, I won't be supporting this motion.
Thank you, other speakers. Alderman Moulder.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I think I probably need to, first of all, saying although I said that council replaces this fence, it was within the context of the Boundary Act, which I used, which says that those things should be shared. Having said that, can I say that if we talk about, so the Act does not say that council cannot contribute to the cost of the fence, what it says is that councils and other local authorities are not required to. So on that basis, we're not breaching the Act. What we have done is by practice, not policy, but by practice, created a general exemption for play parks where there is play equipment. That's a class of exemption. What I was asking for was an individual exemption for this particular property. And I'm sure that if I go back through the history, I could very well find another case where such something similar had happened and that didn't create an exemption that then resulted in everyone at the back of Nettone Hill suddenly wanting their fences, half of their fence castrated plus. Because the exemptions are granted for specific circumstances. I outlined some circumstances. No, I'm not going to die in a ditch and run around the town in circles if I can't get my way. I was simply giving you an opportunity to say, here is a case where we can make a one-off exemption without impact on the general rate, within council's current practices and for two separate reasons. And to pick one of those reasons and say they aren't valid and ignore the other is perhaps being disingenuous. What I'm saying is that there are two reasons council should consider this. One, it is used as recreation space. If council doesn't want to use it as recreational space, then it can put a fence across the road and block it out and a fence down behind the flats. But it is used at that rate and council has obviously permitted that. The damage by the trees is an incidental thing, but the main issue is that this is a play park. It is used by the public, it doesn't have equipment, but, and council one-off would only have to replace the railings and the palings. The posts, as I can see, are quite sound and that would be a shared cost and it wouldn't be huge.
Thank you. The motion is recommended by Alderman Moulder, all those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. At our last council meeting, we discussed, amongst other things, a.
Do we have a second there before we get too far into it, please, Alderman James? Thank you, Alderman Wong.
Thank you very much. The matter was discussed in relation to some safety measures at the intersection of Candos and East Irwin Highway. And at that time, a spokesperson for the residents in Merton's Road requested council to consider their issue, which they have in relation to that intersection of the East Irwin Highway and Merton's Road. This motion is basically, it does state that council writes to the Department of State Growth requesting consideration be given for the provision of safe access into Merton's Road off the East Irwin Highway at Taggo. As it is, and most of us do know, and I think the majority of the community know, that this is a state highway and council really has no authority other than to be a good partner on many issues, particularly in relation to where there are intersections of a council road with a state highway. And this is one in particular. I seek council's support.
Alderman Wong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There's not a great deal I can add except to thank Alderman James for bringing this most sensible motion to us this evening. It is reasoned, it is, as I say, sensible and it's a mature approach to what is potentially an area of the East Irwin Highway that poses a, well, this has to yet to be determined, but there are some safety issues there. So I thank Alderman James for bringing this to our attention and I, here's my full support.
Thank you, other speakers. Alderman Yonkin.
Look, there's probably thirty intersections on, or more, intersections on state roads around the community. And while, you know, I'm not saying that this one doesn't need to be looked at, I mean, I have concerns about plucking one out of the air and saying, well, let's look at that one, without knowing, having an audit done in relation to what the other ones are around the community and having a bit of a priority list on this sort of stuff. So, you know, yeah, I'm not going to vote against this one, but I think a better approach for us as a council would to know that information and have a better idea of what we think rather than just send letters to the state government saying, fix this one, fix that one, when we don't even know what the crash statistics are and we don't even know whether, you know, issues related to the intersection can be fixed easily or what the timeframe is to look at that section of the road. So I think that sort of stuff should be part of our considerations with these sorts of things rather than just plucking one out of the air and saying, hey, let's do that one.
Thank you. Hand over to the Chair, to the Deputy Mayor for a moment, just to, you've raised a point there that troubles me a little bit personally and that is, to what extent do we know it's unsafe? It may well be that it meets safety standards, but I'd be quite happy to support a motion that called for a safety investigation or safety audit at that particular junction. But I think it's jumping the gun to go straight and ask the Department of State Growth to actually provide safe access when it may already be there, I don't know. But, thank you. Alderman Moulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I too, actually picking up on your views on Friday and I asked Alderman James if he was willing to do that and I thought that's what we would get tonight, but we haven't. But that's fine. I think the issue remains that the government would do an audit anyway before they agreed that it was making it safe. So we're just making a statement, I believe, that Alderman James is of the view that this is unsafe and I think that anyone that's been around that area would be able to spot the hazards without very little doubt at all about what happens if you run off the road in those particular spots. Now, no section of the road can be made completely safe, that is the thing. The fact is that there are areas of the road where there are risks that can be assessed and that don't need experts to tell you that if a car runs over, you know, if a car strays onto the gravel here, it'll end up there and rather than hitting a safety barrier or a dirt mound, it'll go headfirst into a very deep culvert, which is exactly the situation at Merton's Road. My concern with these government audits is that they tend to be done on what the outcome the government seeks to do. I know that this matter has been brought to their attention in the past and nothing has happened. The fact is that cars have gone into the culvert at this particular place. But what we do is we get these variations with, sometimes they will pull out the crash statistics and I would imagine that the crashes that have been there haven't probably made it to the crash statistics unless someone was injured or unless someone called the police. So I think that a better case would be, and so you don't get a very good picture at all and I speak from a lot of experience with this because I've attended, you know, these sorts of things. But sometimes also that when we get things like the Rosney Hill linked to East Irwin Highway Road, we get our staff telling us that there are no accident statistics there because, and therefore there's no crash history or very little crash history and therefore it doesn't justify for doing that things. Then you read the State Growth Audit Reporter thing saying, oh, there's a long history of incidents. So it's a case of, you know, if they want to do something, they'll pluck at that and if they don't want to do something, then they'll say, oh, there weren't any reported crashes or there were no serious crashes or they'll up it up. So that's the problem with asking them to go and do an audit rather than telling them straight out, as Alderman James has done, that blind Freddy can see that it's unsafe. It's your road, can you fix it, please?
Thank you, other speakers. Alderman Evans.
Thanks very much. I'm fine with this motion. Venture down Merton's Road during the darkest days of the pandemic is a point to see spectra. One of the little turn-offs down there. And yeah, it's a bit hectic and I agree with the points made about how much of this stuff's recorded and the fact that there's no harm in putting someone who can make a decision about it knows. And I think that's why the word's requesting consideration, what gives me, to use a word my colleague next to me, is comfort around this motion, so I'll be in support.
Thank you, other speakers. Alderman Pierce.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I've supported this motion and may I say, you know, Alderman James doesn't pick a road and just say, I'm going to put that on the agenda tonight. Obviously, he's had complaints about this and concerns and not, Alderman, as I said, it's requesting consideration, that's all it's doing. So I think we should support this motion.
Thank you. Alderman Von Burt.
I too, Mr Mayor, will be supporting this motion. I think it's beholden on us when we perceive that there is a safety issue to bring it to the attention of the appropriate authority and that is what Alderman James is doing. So I support the motion.
Thank you, other speakers. Alderman Walker.
I'm not going to say it's safe and it's fine, there's a significant problem there, so. Yeah, I will be supporting the motion, but it's not all that it could have been and should have been. And I guess it's one of these things, we sometimes see motions around this table, that a little bit of collaboration could have delivered not just a higher number of people on board and support it, but perhaps a more quality shot. When you ask the State Growth to do things, they're pretty reluctant. You don't want to just be asking all the time because it dilutes whatever little leverage that councils have. And to be totally honest, what freaks me out more when this stretch of road is actually a hundred metres further towards the Bowland Bridge. Because what you're having is traffic that's been on a single lane all around that area of Old Beach, facing the cliff, that's suddenly got to an overtaking lane and they'll overtake a bus. Usually it's a benny bus that's got to then try and make its way to the other lane. And they'll overtake a bus, usually it's a benny bus that's got to then try and make its way to the other lane to then turn off at the next street above. And it's not just that, it's also the cars and everything. That is one of the more stressful or concerning aspects that I have when I drive this road several times a week. And that is where we're going to probably see a major effect. The Merton's Road is a real thing and if someone goes down there, that is likely to cause damage and cover. Now, we know that the reports are suggesting that maybe there is not a high level of trauma associated with it, but that's a real thing, we need to look into it. But the real big deal to me, a rear end at nine kilometers an hour on a hundred metres up the road is perhaps a bus or something else that's driving across over. And again, if we collaborated a little and put it out, give and take, we could have looked at sort of a safety order of the section from South Bowland Bridge to you know, Old Beach or something like that. So I'll support it, but it could have been better, it could have been more.
Other speakers? Alderman James, shall I reply?
I seek council support.
Thank you. All those in favour of Alderman James' motion? Against? Thank you. Motion's carried. Moving on to Alderman Von Berto?
No, thank you, Mayor. Mr Mayor, God.
Do we have a second, please? Alderman James, thank you.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, since the last meeting and the decision in relation to Fifty Two Richardson's Road, I've been contacted by a number of concerned Lordedale residents. Their primary concern has been having no knowledge of the proposed development up until the last council meeting and the lack of engagement by council with the community on this matter. The current motion on notice is focused on public consultation. Although it is not a statutory requirement at this stage, I believe consultation should be guaranteed by council at the beginning of the long and complicated process involved to possibly develop and subdivide the land at Fifty Two Richardson's Road. My reasoning is twofold. Firstly, although at its last meeting, council made an administrative decision related to a planning matter, I consider that it should have taken into account the information and evidence that it is statutorily required to do so when it's operating as a planning authority. That is, the proponents' application, the officers' report and recommendation and the representations after the proposal has been publicly exhibited. Community consultation is a key component of the Tasmanian Planning System, the Land Use Planning Approvals Act and the Clarence Interim Planning Scheme. So why would council make a decision without first consulting the local community in this situation? Secondly, public consultation is a cornerstone of council's operation. Council's Community Engagement Policy 2020, which was approved by council on the twenty fourth of February 2020, being moved by Alderman James and seconded by Alderman Kennedy and unanimously approved by all of those Aldermen present in the chamber, notes that the purpose of community engagement is to assist council in its decision-making. The policy highlights that council's community engagement practices will demonstrate accountability and transparency, create confidence in council decisions and enable council to make appropriate decisions by considering the impacts on its community and stakeholders. Many of the current Aldermen were keen to see an updated community engagement policy and the numbers stood for council in 2018 on a platform that included improved consultation with the community. The candidate's statements provided by the Tasmanian Electoral Commission included such phrases as, committed to open and accountable government, focus on making sure residents are engaged with decision-making, keen to provide representation in particular to eastern shore beach communities. Therefore, from a good governance and fairness perspective, the Lordedale and Sanford community should be given an opportunity to express to council their views as to the effect an urban growth boundary extension will have on them before council determines whether a request is made to the minister. The results of the consultation should form part of a report that comes to council on this matter. I seek council support.
Thank you. Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think to provide some relevance to the developers, I think you probably need to read their second paragraph in relation to their verbal presentation this evening and I quote, "This is not an application or detail of an actual development proposal." And they, by the very nature of following through the process of having the council consider their request for a change to the urban growth boundary and by that entails going through a very vigorous process by the nature of approaches to the minister. The minister would have to consult with the other councils in the Greater Hobart area together with the agencies that may be obviously involved in that process. So that is the part of the process that the developers followed. However, they did what I thought was put the whole concept on the public agenda. The number of lots where the public open space is, where the wetlands will be sort of excised out, as you would say, and also changes to the road network. It's a lot of information that should, in my opinion, have not necessarily been included in the plan because it flagged to the community that this was basically a fait accompli. And therefore, we have the situation now where the community is very, very uptight and the petition that was presented this evening, signed by, I think, two hundred persons, basically spelt out a lot of what was in that presentation that the developers provided to the council at the last council meeting. In my opinion, over the years, we have, ever we've had anything like this that has come forward and one that does come to mind is Glebe Hill. That was promoted in the early stages before development occurred and it was canvassed far and wide. Look what we have today, a multi-million dollar development and there's still more land being developed by Lynch Holdings and that is just remarkable. And at that time, we had consultation and it was in the public forum and people knew about it. This very nature of this signaling to the community that they are not part of the public consultation process is a mistake. Now, I'm not blaming the developers because I think they wanted to lay their cards on the table. They wanted to let it be known what they had proposed, what are they proposing and so on. However, it should have been done differently. They are now saying in their correspondence to council that, given they want to now go out to the community and consult and basically have meetings, I think, to discuss, it's too late, it's too late. Now we have to do something to rectify the situation and therefore I see council support to rescind the motion of the last meeting and also then embark with the developers, as they have already intimated that they will go to public consultation. And this could be a joint effort on council's part as well as the developer and the community being involved. And therefore, we actually meet our requirements under our public consultation process. And as the previous speaker mentioned, I think just about everybody around this table who stood in the 2018 election wanted transparency and open decision-making. And by the very nature of us tonight deciding on revoking, rescinding that motion of the last meeting, it sends a clear message to the community that we are up to public consultation and we support their views. Thanks.
Alderman Evans?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Let's be honest, there's a lot going on with this issue. People's passions have been stoked. I completely understand how residents might feel if given the impression that three weeks ago a DA was approved. But I think we need to wind back the clock a bit here and have a sober look at the facts. These people, locals, want to investigate subdividing their land that they own during a housing crisis. They ask all the right questions and are told the processes to follow. Among other things, they paste a full plage ad in the Eastern Shore Sun and they contact all twelve of us. I certainly responded. I hope everyone here did so that they could raise their concerns and be informed. So I'll be interested to see who did engage with them before this moment. I joined Alderman James and Warren for a visit. When I raised consultation with them, they pointed to the Eastern Shore Sun article and that they'd been advised that the correct process is for that consultation to occur after the initial council recommendation. Essentially, they play by the rules. A decision is made by this council on the urban growth boundary. Not everyone is happy, but the consultation process is still to come. Indeed, we're informed tonight it starts this month. I'm all for regular reviews of consultation processes and communication, but let's do it properly. Let's not put politics before policy. All this motion is, is a heavily political cry for attention that does nothing more than generate more angst in the community and will no doubt be used down the track to smear those who don't support its flawed nature. Politics before policy. I'll be watching this proposal like a hawk, both through the processes with the state government and then if there's a DA or a rezoning application through council. If it doesn't stack up, I'll be consistent with my previous positions on consultation and process. I've gone into bat for proper consultation at some political cost in my term already. Also, this council has shown that it's prepared to knock back development applications, including some big ones that aren't properly consulted. At this stage, this is just a local developer who saw out the process to follow and is doing just that. They contacted Alderman well and truly in advance and tried to generate interest through local media. They've played by the rules and we're going to do this to them. We're going to completely pull the rug out. It's politics before policy. Where was this motion after Morningside? Where was it as an amendment three weeks ago? When was this feedback given to the proponents when they reached out last year? It's wedge politics one O one. I actually had a bottle of sweet chili sauce I was going to bring along tonight to go with the wedges. I've seen a lot of wedge politics and this is, it's the pièce de résistance. Politics before policy. What's being lost here is the previous vote was the start of the process. Nothing is even close to being approved. Let the proper consultation occur, not some slapped-together process retrofitted to a vote Alderman didn't like. As I said last meeting, the urban growth boundary is almost a teenager. It's in dire need of an update that just does not seem to be happening under this government. I'm not going to be the one who cuts off at the knees and attempt to open up land during a housing crisis at the first step. This motion puts politics before policy and is worded to wedge. I'll just conclude with some words on the housing crisis in Tasmania. It's touching every level of our community. Literally this morning, I spoke to someone who lives in their car. Their teenage son, who has a disability, lives with their sister because the mum can't get a home. There's a warning paper last week in her fifties living in a car or outside of the road. I know people in their twenties, thirties, forties, fifties, let's keep going, who can't get a tow hold in the market. People might argue that upper-end blocks have nothing to do with public housing. Yes, they bloody do. There's a logjam throughout the property market, houses for sale, private rents, available public housing. House prices are up six point nine percent in the September quarter, up fifteen point seven percent in the twelve months. Rental affordability across Tasmania is the worst in the country. Rent has increased by thirty-seven percent over the past five years. Wake up. Let the application to extend the UGB go through the proper processes. Funny enough, this motion is anti-consultation. If it passes, we will go from the proper consultation processes, which are now underway, to an ad hoc process retrofitted to what end?
Thank you, Alderman.
No thanks.
Any other speakers? Alderman Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to commend Alderman Von Berto on this motion that encourages council to go beyond the statutory requirements for consultation. And that's certainly something that a number of us have been keen to pursue. And so often we get the response, we're not required to consult. And the developer has followed the process and been told that they weren't required to consult at this stage and it is very much a chicken and egg situation. They've tried to provide information at this stage because if they hadn't, they would have been accused of not being transparent. But by providing information without the chance to properly consult, there's a lot of misinformation out there and it's going to be, I predict, quite difficult for them to rein that in. So in terms of policy before politics, policy is that we proceed in an orderly way to reviewing the land use strategy. And one of the reasons I voted against this last time was that I believe that if you're going to take a strategic view, you need to look at the big picture. And while I think that this has the potential to be a good development with the, working with the community, I still would like to see it as part of an overall strategy for council rather than jumping the gun because, again, we run the risk of doing piecemeal. We'll put this bit in, we'll put that bit in, without looking at the overall strategy and our needs and the existing land use and the levers that we might use or encourage the state government to use to encourage developers who already hold those three thousand vacant lots to start developing those. And as was raised in one of the deputations, being able to concentrate infill development or not necessarily infill, but greater housing density closer to the city where there are services and transport and so on is something that should be considered as part of that strategic review. So again, I would like to congratulate Alderman Von Berto for encouraging us just to take a step back and pursue the policy in the right order. I don't see this as political, but just taking that strategic view rather than a piecemeal approach and giving the developer the chance to build that community support, which hasn't happened. But I do commend the developer for trying and getting caught in the middle. Thank you.
Other speakers?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for that reminder of community engagement because it has something that's always been very important to me. And look, I think I've got a number of points that have been made. However, I might just put a different sort of spin on this for, because I'd like to. Many years ago, when Manfesta opened up for sale on Bayview Drive, I remember clearly how strongly the residents of Lordedale were against this. They were worried about the increase in traffic, the lack of support in the infrastructure and they didn't want change and of course, most people don't. Many of us at that time could only dream of ever being able to afford to actually live there. I walked a number of those magnificent blocks on Bayview Drive many times. The land sold quickly and homes were built, families grew up in a wonderful place. Now, I have many friends and family living at Lordedale and some on Bayview Drive. A number of them have gone on to successfully subdivide their original blocks over recent years, not only making a tidy sell from these small subdivisions, but also giving others the opportunity to actually live there. The southern beaches today are highly desirable. I liked when my grandparents bought a front home on Beluga Street, sold for five thousand dollars. Now, most of our kids that grow up in these areas, the southern beaches, haven't been able to return due to the shortage of land and what is available is out of their price range unless they have wealthy parents with an investment property to them. So I would like to do whatever I can to try and help not only our young people, younger people my age, who are living through a housing crisis like we have never seen before. A housing crisis to a point where on a number of occasions I've taken people into my own home, they had no roofs to go. Not too many people here in this room tonight have to worry about where they're going to sleep. Recent developments at the Beachside Village that I lived at for thirty years didn't make everyone happy, but it certainly made those, it snapped up those blocks, especially the ones at the Caravan Park, very happy. It was and remains a very well-planned development and when it came to the actual time the community consultation was required to take place, they did it well at the appropriate time. I supported that private development even though at the time I was tagged as anti-development. If someone hadn't developed the land I live on, I wouldn't be there and neither would those people that have emailed us that live close to Richardson's Road. But remember, we're talking about a possible change, a possible change to the urban. But remember, we're talking about a possible change, a possible change to the urban growth boundary. Optimally, a decision for state government. Should fifty two Richardson's Road ever come back to us as an actual development application, it will be given the scrutiny that H D A receives. And if community is not engaged in the process and we're not comfortable with traffic management, access, density, et cetera, I'll not approve it. It's as simple as that. This is no different to the Mornington situation last year. Why didn't that create the same level of concern? Is it because it's Mornington? I'm all for consultation and Alderman Edmonds has just outlined that process very well. But the irony of it all is that on page two hundred and fifty-nine of our agenda tonight, we're being asked to support the City of Hobart's request to extend the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy's urban growth boundary to include additional land at West Hobart. And finally, while we've received many emails, texts and calls on this matter, some very polite, some not quite so, there's been an overwhelming amount of people in the community that actually have come up and spoken to me saying that they're really excited that maybe one day, probably well into the future, they just may have a chance to get a foothold into living somewhere close to the southern beaches, where thirty five hectares of bushland will remain if this development happens. However, some of the communication I've received has just said, just open up more land at Ropey or Leap Hill. Well, there's not much land left there now and it's becoming unaffordable. Let's be fair and think about others, give others the hope that many enjoy, so they may enjoy what so many do. And freeing up some of this, the other homes in the area, it may just get rid of that jam that we're just not moving anywhere from at the moment. So my position as of last meeting has not changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd have to say Alderman Edmund's speech tonight was great. I think you covered a lot of the points there, Luke, so that was great. I mean, the consultation issue keeps coming up all the time. And while it's an essential part of our role, there's also quite a few people out there that say to me, sometimes just get on with it, all right? Sometimes we can overdo that. I'm not saying that we need to do that in this situation. The whole process is going to go through an extensive consultation process. And I think that, you know, there is, you know, and as Alderman Edmund said, this is the first step in it. State governor told us if we have parcels of land that we believe could be added to within the urban growth boundary, this is the process they expect us to take. They couldn't come to us with a proposal, you know, they came to us with a proposal. We've said, okay, let's look at it. And our expectation in this whole chamber is for that to occur in a rigorous and thorough, you know, process, you know, moving forward. The issue that, you know, we've raised here in relation to people saying, no, I don't want my beachside suburb to change. And I've got to be careful here to say, you know, I really feel about some people that have that attitude. I mean, I think, you know, every, we can't just leave these communities as they are. I mean, look, every community's expanded over the years and to suggest that we can just stay as they are and not have any change at all is just not practical. You know, people have a right to live on the beaches and I think it's, you know, we should, you know, look at that as long as it's done in a sensitive and effective way. Bottom line is with all this sort of thing too, I mean, the tricky one that we're faced with at the moment is we try and do an infill housing development. We get smashed because everyone's worried about people looking in their backyard. We try and extend the urban growth boundary and the people that live in that little seaside community go, no, I want to stay as it is. At the end of the day, we're elected to make decisions on behalf of the whole community and represent everyone. Not the people that live in Bayside Drive, not just the people that live in Lordedale, but the people that are impacted by the decisions that we make across the board. And I don't think we need to go on too much further about the housing affordability situation, but it'd be negligent of us to not be looking at this issue because whatever way we look at it, we have to seriously look at, you know, speeding up some of these things. And the thing that everyone's got to remember is this paralysis through over analysis that we put developers through adds to the cost of these blocks. Every time we slow this down, there's another five thousand dollars added to the cost of each block if intervention goes ahead. So we've got to be considerate of that too, you know? You know, you ask a planner, do we need to do more planning and do a master plan in the area? They'll say yes, you know, I mean, people are trying to stop stuff, they'll say yes. But the people that are going to pay the bills, you know, we've got to consider them as well. You know, the bottom line is with this, I mean, this is privately owned land that have a right to look at their options in terms of what they want to do moving forward. And I think we should be giving them every opportunity to do that. I mean, the other issue is we need to look at is the taxpayers that we need as a council to pay for all the traffic fixes, to pay for all the extra public open space, to do all the things that communities expect us to do. And that is also a part of the whole economic activity. The state government need money, the federal government need money. You know, we grow or we die, to simple as that. And we, you know, to stop these sort of developments has an impact on every government service out there and we've got to consider that as well. You know, at the end of the day, this is going to have two goes at community consultation moving forward. There's going to be consultation as part of the state governments looking at this in terms of the urban growth boundary adjustment. And then obviously there'd be a lot more consultation in relation to the design of the actual subdivision, if the urban growth boundary is adjusted. You know, these guys put something forward and to say that, you know, that they've done the wrong thing by putting forward what they think it might look like and giving it to the community, I mean, you know, it's one or the other. You know, you're going to have it for not putting enough information out there and you put it out there and you want to use that against them. I mean, that's just ridiculous. But look, these people, I'm sure they'll be looking at trying to do the best thing they can to increase the value of the blocks and the amenity for the community because it's in their best interest to do that. And I think there's no reason why we should stop this whole process now, go backwards. And, you know, it is, the consultation is what we're proposing to do here. I mean, no one's going to happen. And to stop this whole situation now, I think it'd be the wrong thing to do. You know, we need to give developers a bit of security, not only these guys, but everyone moving forward. I encourage everyone to reject this margin and stay with what we had at the last meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Peters.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Hewitton's quite right. A lot of rate payers don't realise this, but we get smashed in all angles regardless of what we try to do. The simple fact is that I know people living in cars. Notice I don't say car, I say I know people living in cars. I know people living in tents and I've tried to help some of those. I've had people that are residents of Clarence try to buy into their own home and they've had to move to Brighton Oak, which is New Norfolk, where prices are cheaper. Here, we've got a situation where the applicant has come to us, done everything right. But see, they're going to do a public consultation. I understand the people in Bayside Drive being a little bit nervous because I know it's a beautiful spot, I know that. When I've been to Lordedale football games, I've often quite driven up there, had a look at the view. It's magnificent, so I understand that. But there will be consultation here and really it's up to the minister. The minister will have a big part in this. So I do not support the motion going forward.
Okay, other speakers? Alderman John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really do empathise with the applicant. I mean, they have done what they've been told they should do and are getting slammed on all sides because of it. Despite that, I didn't support this last time and I will support Alderman Von Berto's motion tonight. Because fundamentally, I do not agree, as Alderman Warren doesn't, with doing piecemeal adjustments to the urban growth boundary when we have finally managed to get a review of the whole thing through. You know, it's taken so long to get the government to agree that we should do a review and now we're actually finally at that stage and yet we're still saying, oh, you know, just wait because we want to tinker with it here and we want to tinker with it there. You know, let's be strategic, let's look at this as a whole area. I absolutely agree with all of those comments about homeless and how fundamentally we need to get more pieces of property available for people to live in. But as a council, we should be using some of the levers that we have or finding new ways to get those three thousand pieces of land that have already been approved, have buildings put on them. If the housing market is so phenomenal, why are these places not being built on? What is it that's saying to developers, I'm not going to make enough money out of this, so I still won't do it? That this one hundred and forty-six, one hundred and forty-seven blocks in Lordedale is going to make a difference? I don't think that making these ad hoc piecemeal decisions is setting us up for any strategic way of looking at what property we have available in our city and where people can have houses to live and afford to live.
Okay, other speakers? Alderman Moller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much has been said about this council in recent years about misleading information and misinformed things out there. And here we have one where there are a number of assumptions built into this motion and a number of assumptions built into some of the submissions that we get that are just not true. For starters, we are not producing, we are not doing, we're not, this is not about rezoning that land. This is not about actually the development of that land in accordance with those pictures. The things that were actually presented to a council workshop, if you recall. And some of us asked lots of questions and very few of those questions. So this is an extension to a change to a government-imposed policy. It is in the end, as, which is why you request the minister to do things, an attempt to get it back onto the agenda for a discussion of this boundary. No one doubts that the boundary will be adjusted. You look at all the paperwork we've got, you look at the motions and you look at some of the minister's own information sheets. So sooner or later it must be done. Another piece of misinformation is out that we voted against the officer's recommendation. The officers just did not recommend against the urban growth boundary. They just said that it was premature to do it at that particular point in time. And the majority of council disagree because that was a process that existed. That was the process that the minister had put. Consultation does not occur at this stage of the process when the government is reconsidering its policies. But then we talk about, and the thing that comes through is saying that when we get to the question about should we expand the urban growth boundary or not, we get the constant arguments about the traffic, about more people, more houses equals more traffic and more cars. There's something goes before that, more people equals more houses, more traffic and more cars. And then we can't, and Hobart is a geographically constrained city and I'm talking about the City of Hobart. It is constrained by the steepness of the mountain and it's constrained by the river. And we're not quite into canal developments there yet. And even if you go to Hobart, not everyone wants to live in an expensive high-rise in a Hobart flat. Some of us want to raise our kids in places where, you know, there's a backyard to play in. So the idea that we can continue to get rid of all our traffic problems. So in other words, anything that's got to use the brook or traffic congestion, anything that's got to get across the bridge, anything that's got to come up the southern outlet, none of that should be developed. We should all focus in on the Hobart so that people don't have to use and we don't get traffic congestion. So that the existing schools are there and all those sorts of arguments. But then, as I said, not everyone wants to live in Hobart. And even then, Hobart has only got one direction to go up. And now have a look at the community consultation about Hobart, not high-rise and what the community thinks about increasing the density of housing in Hobart. So, you know, there comes a point where we have to say we need to release more land. And we need to release more land because we have more people and there is a housing crisis. So it's really on those bases that I'm saying that we should stick to our original decision. Rescinding this motion and then going into consultation is actually flying in the face of the other process that the minister is proposing, which is that they will do, put out a policy paper on the broader policy and then move through in that particular direction. So whichever way you go, rescinding this motion doesn't change what's going to happen. And it doesn't change the fact that consultation will occur at the most appropriate time on both the policy issues and on this particular rezoning of the land. So I think that we got it pretty well right the last time and that there is no need to rescind the motion because even if we did so, the policy would plow on.
Okay, other speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I've been able to support this motion. And as has been previously said this evening, it is important to note the decision made by this council three weeks ago in our last meeting was only the first step. The first step in what will either be a law in a juris process or if the minister for planning determines not to support council's request, it'll be rather short-lived. Importantly, if the minister for planning supports the amendment to the urban growth boundary, then there is a statutory obligation for this council to widely consult at that appropriate juncture. Not before, because that would not only be premature, but could also needlessly upset and worry some in our community. It is important that we do not put the horse before the cart. Simply put, Mr. Mayor, this is why the process is what it is. As I said at our last meeting, there is no question that we need to manage urban sprawl. And as far as possible, we should be aiming to sensibly densify our existing urban areas before spreading out further. But we all know that there will always be opposition to densification and there will always be a need for greenfield sites or wish to build new affordable homes. As we know, the state government has been promising to review the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy for several years. But nothing appears to be happening in this place. As a result, councils, including this one, as Alderman Kennedy said, we refer to our agenda papers this evening, Hobart City Council, are starting to go alone with their own request to the minister for adjustments to the urban growth boundary, which can be done with much difficulty. Now, Mr. Mayor, this is far from ideal as it means that rather than having a coordinated approach to land use planning in Southern Tasmania, the existing arbitrary urban growth boundary is just going to get even more arbitrary. However, on the upside, it does release highly coveted land for development so that we can play a part, an integral part, in addressing the housing affordability and the housing vulnerability crisis facing our state and so appropriately referenced earlier type of the Edmonds. It depends whether. Mr. Mayor, we made the one decision last meeting and I've not heard any cogent reason to change my mind this evening. And for that reason, and the others just outlined, I do not support this motion.
Okay. Alderman Moller?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I could get a kumbaya around this chamber. I can get acknowledgement by making the statement that the urban growth boundary is not fit for purpose. I think we all agree with that, that it isn't well past time. I might get twelve people to agree with me that it wasn't right in the first place, that it was a manifest violation. I could probably get ten. Might be down to nine after I again criticise the hapless S T C A for their dreadful submission that was largely taken up and forms this. This is the side child of the S T C A, the dreadful situation that was the plan of twenty eleven. It wasn't right then and certainly not right now. But this process, let's be brutally honest about what is before us. This is council or people trying to use a mechanism that has evolved as a workaround. This is the workaround for the fact that the urban growth boundary is well past the time for review as a way to try and sort things out now. You know, in the last eighteen months, we've had two other significant changes requested and we've gone through that process. And there were pretty high votes around the chamber to support acting strictly right of the M Y. Why wouldn't you? There were big roads pointing to that land. It was eminently rational. The impact was going to be negligible and I think it was welcomed by the ordering residents. I certainly did not get a single bit of criticism or concern over that one. The other one was Mornington. And what was the process with Mornington? That was a developer spending the time to get some concepts out, rigorously engaging through Facebook to say, this is what we're thinking, this is getting the process along. There was radio interviews and again, a not small development, but I would say a not complex development was put before us and I certainly supported it then. Now, I would note on both those occasions that the move of this motion, Alderman Von Berto did support those motions. But in both cases, didn't put up a rescind motion for either. And I think that speaks to the complexity that comes with this development and the scale of this and the need as noted in the officer's report. And again, I don't agree with them all the time, I did with those other two procedures, but that this should be part of a wider, a wider, if you like, more sombre and dispassionate look at the urban growth boundary. Because here's the deal, we don't want to have greenfields forever like Los Angeles has, but by the same token, we don't want commie thirty storey high tower blocks that look like the bad old days of Brettis Park. There is need for inner residential and there is need for greenfields. There is need for inner residential and there is need for greenfields. And the urban growth boundary needs to be reviewed. But something of this scale is not the way to do it. And I would say this came very close last week to no residents being aware. This came acutely close to this one sleeping through the keifer where residents, or at least one, can become aware of it and use mechanisms to let other people know. So I will be supporting this rescinding motion because it's consistent with how I voted last time. And, you know, there's been some emotive points put up and that's fair enough. I'm regularly dealing with people in significant housing stress, as many of us are. And I would expect in that case that if I do bring up a motion to dispose of some vacant land on Clarence Street at a future council meeting, that all of the people that have spoken to I would probably support that motion. So here we go. This is a complicated proposal and what council did last time can't just be said as, you know, just innocent bystanders. The outcome of last time was a nod on the head that we are behind this project. So I just think that of this scale, it should be done through the review and that review is so sorely needed of the urban growth boundary and that is something that needed to happen yesterday. So I won't be supporting this motion.
Oliver Walker, write a reply.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, many of the Aldermen have made pertinent comments and points in relation to the review of the urban growth boundary. And they, a number of them have also referred to how they voted at the last meeting. And at the last meeting, I voted for a strategic approach. On every occasion when the urban growth boundary has come before council, over many years, I've voted for a strategic approach. So that the urban growth boundary is actually reviewed. It was supposed to be reviewed five years after it came to fruition, which was 2011. So now it's 2021 and it's 10 years and we haven't had it reviewed. So I have voted in a strategic manner on every occasion. I don't believe in an ad hoc approach, one by one, looking at this. However, I would like to stress that my motion is focused on upfront public consultation by council. It needs to be pointed out that in the process that we have now started in actually requesting the minister to look at this situation, it is not guaranteed that the minister will consult with the public. The information sheet on the Regional Land Use Strategy 1, reviewing and amending the regional land use strategies, notes that for amendments seeking to incorporate broader strategic changes to a regional land use strategy, the Minister for Planning is also likely to seek public input through a formal public exhibition process during the five-week consultation. Broader strategic changes have a potential to affect property rights and the community should be afforded natural justice before the minister declares an amended strategy. However, speaking to our officers, there is no definition given to the broader strategic changes and therefore it appears it would be at the minister's discretion as to whether this requested amendment would include public consultation. Some of the Aldermen have argued that public consultation is part of the rezoning and subdivision process known as a section 43 application, sorry, a section 43A application as it refers to a previous section of the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. Yes, consultation is part of that process, but from the community's perspective, that's way too late to be effective in having a voice as to whether development should take place and perhaps making some changes to a proposed development. Regardless of the outcome of this motion, a policy should be developed by council to ensure public consultation is an integral part of any further situations where a proponent seeks a council administrative decision to request the minister to amend the urban growth boundary. And therefore I foreshadow a further motion at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Von Berto. So the motion is as presented by Alderman Von Berto. All those in favour? Against? The motion is lost. Now advised that council intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act. First item there, 11.3.1 is a development application at 3176A South Arm Road, South Arm. I'll read that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Alderman Peers. Alderman Yurington.
Yeah, well, we go straight from one beach side to another one. But look, you know, I looked at this plant. You know, there's been quite a lot of changes in that area in through South Arm in relation to subdividing a block. And, you know, I look at this one and I think it's a very sensitive approach to a rather large block. You know, there's some concerns were put forward by some of the other local residents and, you know, in relation to the coastal zones and not complying with certain aspects of the... And I just want to go back and actually comment on a couple of those, which was... Now, I think the major sort of message that came from that, other than I don't like it, was that it doesn't comply with coastal policies and those sorts of things. And I want to read through some of the comments that the council staff have made in relation to some of the representations that were made there. I mean, and it says here, I mean, there are at least 12 existing dwellings nearby within this mapped overlay area that extends along South Arm Beach. The application is considered to comply with all relevant acceptable solutions and all performance criteria of the waterway and coastal protection zone. In relation to the state coastal policy, the application is considered to be in accordance with the state coastal policy. When it comes down to the erosion and hazard code, you know, there's already houses in that area. It suggests that, you know, the people that are there can have theirs, but someone else can't, you know, subdivide their block and give, you know, a family member, I believe, the opportunity to have a house in that area too. I think, you know, is not a good enough reason to knock this back. I think it's a very sensitive and carefully designed house. And as the, and when the other one here, we're talking about climate change, some people like to get all worked up about that. The application is considered to be consistent with all relevant acceptable solutions and all performance criteria of the coastal erosion hazard zone, which assesses the erosion risk accounting for climate change and storm surge events. So council has looked at all of that and worked out that, you know, it does comply and meet all of the relevant codes. Now, if someone's gone to the trouble of designing a building and dealing with all these issues that they have to go through, I'm more than happy to support someone having the opportunity to develop a piece of land like this and create something which, you know, I'm sure they'll enjoy, you know, for the rest of their life, like the other people in this area are doing at the same time. So I'd encourage my colleagues to support this application and allow this development to proceed.
Thank you, Alderman Yurington.
Thank you, Mayor. I totally agree with Alderman Yurington there. Pages 27 to 33, I must admit, I had to read it two or three times to make sure, but I'm very happy with that. Alderman Yurington's already used the part I'm going to read it about comments and I totally agree with him there. One of the objections I did look at, and it was someone complained about the height. The height is 3.8 and they could go to 8.5, so I found that rather strange. But look, I think this is a good development and I certainly support the recommendation, Mayor.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's interesting to note that on page 11 of the Geo-Enviromentalist Solutions Report, and I quote, "demonstrates the projected coastline position, which evidences severe erosion impacts in the shorter term." And in the actual recommendation that's before council, item two, or one of the conditions at item two and three, refers to those reports and has also made additional comments in relation to the erosion impact on where this particular building is located. In other words, and we've all received a copy of this, there is what they call a waterway and coastal protection area guidance map. And that is a line that has been drawn. And this particular property is outside that line and not in keeping with the other properties that are well back in that, behind that particular coastal code line. On page of the council's report, on page 35, under the comment from the planner, council's planner, there are at least 12 existing dwellings nearby the subject site within the mapped code overlay area that extends along the properties adjacent to South Arm. These are, that are within the map code. And one of those is 3188, 3186, 318, 3180. Now, 3180 is directly behind the line. That's 3180. This is 3176. In other words, this is the only dwelling that is over and outside that particular code line, in that particular line along that coast. There are a couple of little, not shacks, but boathouses that are obviously been there for many years. But this particular dwelling is over and not within the capmost guideline. Whereas all the other properties, and that's been referred to by the planner, in that he said they are all within the existing code and also within that erosion guideline. The fact of the matter is that this particular dwelling exceeds that and is not in keeping with the performance criteria of 11.7.1, 11.7.1B, in that the substantial part of the proposed building and works extend beyond the waterway and coastal protection area guidance map and impact on the natural values of the area of the coastline. And I mentioned a moment ago about the comments that have been made by the Geo-Enviromentalist Solutions that demonstrates there is evidence of severe erosion impacts in that particular place beyond the coastal protection area guidance map. If this particular motion is not accepted, I'd like to foreshadow a refusal motion.
Thank you. Other speakers?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make one point. I could make a lot of points. But I think it's really important to note that this dwelling is required to be engineered to a higher standard than the surrounding older dwellings and as such would not pose an unreasonable risk. So I think that's a very pertinent piece of information that we need to keep in mind. There's a lot of information here, but that's the important piece of information.
Yes, thank you. This is recommended for approval and the coastal proximity has been touched upon in the report and also again thereby Alderman Von Berto. Does this application put the dwelling at a closer proximity to the beach compared to the layout of others? Yes. Will some people feel that the area is undergoing degree of change yet? I wouldn't wash my hands of that, but as a planning authority, they don't have a determining weight. To individuals, it certainly can. But as a planning authority, it has happened. So it's recommended for approval. It does pose some complexities, you might say, compared to a standards of urban block that they've been addressed. And I think it's incumbent on us to support it.
Thank you. Other speakers? Robert Clowden, Yurington? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologise all the way and I didn't see you there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, building this close to the coast does cause me some concern. And even though we're assured by Alderman Walker and Alderman Von Berto that it will be engineered to a particularly high standard compared to similar dwellings to account for that, I notice that there are a number of conditions imposed on this development. That just gives me cause for concern. It would have been so much easier just to build a little bit further back and not have to do that. So it sort of underlines the fact that there is a risk that has to be addressed and there's a certain danger in whether those some conditions will be fulfilled or will be effective. So I do have some concerns about this.
Thank you. Alderman Yurington, write a reply.
Ah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I think a couple of comments in relation to the way it's designed and built, you know, summed it up pretty much. But the other interesting one was that the boathouses have been there for many years. So if they've been able to sustain that and deal with the environment with probably a builder on jam tends with that much engineering background, I don't know, I think this might have been more than final. Like I said, I think it's a great development and we should be supporting it. Thank you.
So the recommendation is approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against? The motion is carried. 11.3.2 is a development application at 39 Maluga Street, Bell Reef, dwelling additions and operations. Thank you, Alderman Walker. Second, Alderman Lumley. Alderman Walker? Any other speakers? Alderman Endams?
Briefly, this is quite close to where I live, so I took a very strong, thorough read through this one. Well, the concerns raised are fair enough, but I think ultimately they're dealt with in the report as to why this would be approved.
Thank you. Other speakers? No need for writing a reply. The motion is recommending approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. 11.3.3 is a development application at 39 South Arm Road Rugby for a warehouse. Thank you, Alderman Peers. Alderman Kenny, you have a take there. Alderman Peers?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, this is, as you said, for a warehouse. Again, we approved a warehouse here, oh, some years ago, that was, never went any further. So in this case, the design this time is actually lower. And look, it's in the same spot, so I really think we should be supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman Kenny. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Yes, I have a couple of questions through you to Mr. Lovell. Mr. Lovell, in the recommendation on page 71, it refers to replace first sentence with all external surfaces must be finished in a muted tone to the satisfaction of the city manager's city planning. So by the very nature of the word muted tones, does that include the bright blue that's currently on the facade of the buildings that has caused some angst amongst the number of residents with application or DA 1, 2, 3 and 4 on this thing? That's the first question, please.
Mr. Mayor, the reason why the condition's imposed is because the application doesn't specify what colours it will be and there is a clause in the script that requires it. That's the second part of your question. I would do what I would call the faded blue, the dull blue, the muted blue, definitely a muted tone. The definition of non-muted, if you like, is really things that cause a high level of roof activity. So you would get ziegler's whites and those sorts of colours. So I would, and exactly you mentioned in the report that should the blue be proposed, that we would approve it over that condition.
Yes. The second question is, and it was raised by one of the residents adjoining the development, between the, on the northern wall, which obviously faces a number of the properties on Ruby Point Road, is there proposed to be air conditioning units or any other apparatus that may cause an impact between those property residences on Ruby Point Road? I just can't, I don't know if I can ascertain from the diagram as to whether there's going to be just a sheer wall, plain wall or, it's the northern wall, of course. Mr. Lovell?
I can't see any external air conditioning plants shown on the elevation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Alderman Warren?
I'd just like to note that Alderman Walker seems to have sent an advertisement in here outside the election. Several times since the election happened.
That's on attachment three, Bonfata, for those who are wondering what I'm talking about.
It's an old picture.
Well, spotted, eh?
Could be the whole election, but we don't know how long.
Many, many elections, but that's it.
Alderman Peers, write a reply? The motion is for recommendation for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you. 11.3.4... Eleven point, uh, three point four is a development application where council was being asked to, uh, enter into a consent agreement in regard to eighty-four East Two and Highway. I'll remove them, second of place. Alderman Blomley, thank you, Alderman Mulder. Alderman Blomley, would you like to speak to it? Alderman Mulder, other speakers? Alderman James?
I have to make some comment in relation to this because this council, uh, very wisely, in my opinion, went ahead and, uh, refused this application on a number of grounds and, and, uh, we all know basically what transpired at that time. And I know we have received correspondence from the, uh, representatives of the appeal. And I think in the, in the, in the text of the emails that we've received was that they would have liked to have a, a better outcome, but in the circumstances of the mediation process, uh, pursued in its course of what happens in a mediation process. And therefore they have, uh, signed off on this. So anyway, look, uh, that's the process, that's the way it, um, proceeds through the statutory process. And, um, I suppose that, uh, there have been some concessions, but they're minor concessions. But at least they have, um, assigned, uh, the consent agreement or, I mean, the parties to that together with the, the developer. And so we're left with this, and so I'll support the recommendation.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Warren?
Um, yes, uh, like Alderman James, I think this is the least worst outcome. I know that, um, not everybody is happy. Um, I'm reluctant to support it because I, I don't think it's a good outcome, given our original decision. Um, and I do feel for the, the, um, people who are affected by this.
Other speakers? Robert Clowley, uh, sorry, Alderman Walker?
Look, I'll echo the conversation that I heard today in as much as, um, consent agreements and the alternative is the previous plan, um, and the, you know, the small con- you know, the concessions around the excavation and other things will make a difference. Um, it won't, won't absolve the impact, but it, it will make a difference, so. Um, I think at this point, and I don't know whether Alderman Mulder has spoken to this, but, uh, if he hasn't, then the point that he's made at previous council meetings and worth reiterating that it's, it's a problematic part of the process that the mediation sort of happens, if at all, at the end of a council decision rather than a system where it might be able to be happening early on. And, um, that's, that's unnecessary anyways for all parties and it's at a cost for all parties, so, um, worth, worth reiterating that it's, it's something that would make a material difference to, um, proponents and, 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 and people with concerns alike. Uh, if, if things could be sort of brought up early on and discussed early on. Might not really mean resolution, but, um, it would have to be a better process than the process like this.
Thank you. Robert Clowley, Alderman. Uh, so the motion is that we enter into a consent agreement, all those in favor? Carried unanimously. Eleven point three point five is a development application at nineteen Kalaki Road, Rosney, for three multiple dwellings. Alderman Yuriken, Alderman Kennedy, thank you. Alderman Yuriken?
Oh, no, as a good office recommendation on this one, Mayor, I think it's a very, uh, attractive looking development that'll, uh, add some inner city housing, uh, uh, opportunities for, uh, for people in our city, and I think it's a, um, a very well done development.
Alderman Kennedy?
I think it is, Mr. Mayor.
Totally agree.
Other speakers? Put the motion in, all those in favor? Against? The motion is carried. Um, now, for eleven point three point six, um, there is a revised recommendation which has been circulated. I understand there's a very small change to one of the clauses. Do you need to, uh, mention what that might be? I know Alderman Blomley, I expect to move the motion. Mr. Lovell, would you like to just summarize the change?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, it relates to condition four and, uh, it simply clarifies the plan numbering that we're referring to. Unfortunately, the plans that were submitted to the application numbered two different plans with the same number. Um, and we used that, so in the revised recommendation, we added a further description just to clarify the two plans.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Alderman Yuriken? Alderman Blomley?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, I rise to support the development application for a twenty-four hour McDonald's restaurant, the thirty past road hour at what is known as Gleep Hill Village. The D A before us this evening is a culmination of significant work over many years and wide community consultation, and it's my third view that the office's recommendation has it one hundred percent right. However, with all these types of issues, there is always some opposition and clearly is incumbent on us to consider the views of all members of our community. Notably, none of the few who appeared in the meeting several weeks ago opposed this D A have bothered to make a deputation this evening, ignoring or receiving any recent email correspondence in opposition to this proposal. On the third of February, along with a hundred other University Council residents, attended the community update session hosted by team typically held at the manual questions school in Roanoke. At this event, pertinent questions regarding security, noise and lighting were raised with the proponent, Mr. Scott Despanton, and it was reassuring to hear the responses to those queries perfectly aligned with the professional advice we've been provided with this evening. Issues of concern raised at the three February committee update included light spill, noise and car park loitering. Mr. Mayor, in response, it is important to note that Coles already has approved to trade twenty-four seven. McDonald's has identified that sufficient demand exists and state of the art engineering solutions will mitigate any and all potential impacts, um, thus, um, so far identified. In regard, regards to potential light spill, other than some downlight on the drive through warnings, the reality is that there are no external facing lights on any of the McDonald's facades, only there are illuminated signage. The northern elevation where the closest houses are is largely devoid of lights except for downlight on the drive through warning and a single golden arches sign. Most importantly, the site is set well above the nearest houses, so any possible light spill is not ever breathed in at that. On the sound mitigation front, the approximately two meters of acoustic fence around the drive through provides protection to the nearest residents. The site is set well above the nearest houses, so any sounds are directed above them and there will be significant tree planting along Commercial Drive that separates the houses from the business, providing yet another layer of comfort. In regards to potential car park loitering, the Gleep Hill car park will have greater security than any other centre in Hobart, and this is going to be truly state of the art. It will include, um, full CCTV coverage, car counters and number plate recognition. The important issue here is that having a business operate twenty-four seven actually improves security when compared to a closed centre in the dark of night. Mr. Mayor, as we all know, Makers is one of the world's top retailers and is a powerful employment generator. Importantly for the youth of our city, McDonald's has a big focus on youth training and management experience. Mr. Mayor, this will be a wonderful addition to the Gleep Hill area and the city of Clans and is a sound recommendation, and accordingly, I seek, uh, the support of colleagues.
Thank you. Alderman Yuriken?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think that my colleague there has summarized all the major issues that came through. But the bottom line with this one is, I mean, the area's always been zone commercial. Um, those that now might be saying that they don't particularly want it in that area, um, you know, I mean, it was always going to happen. I think it's something that, uh, well, that certainly had value to the community, the opportunity to create jobs for the youth of, of our city. Um, will be, uh, will be good, and I think the, uh, this is something that should be all, uh, willing to support. Uh, we all know that there is, uh, there's certainly demand for, uh, increased, uh, shopping centres and, uh, access to a supermarket at the moment. Now, Shawlon is still well and truly, uh, very proud, and I, and I look forward to having this and, and the rest of the, uh, the development would go ahead and, uh, give people more choice out there in the community, which I think is the important part of, uh, of this whole process, so I encourage my colleagues to support, uh, this proposal.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Mulder?
I think, Mr. Mayor, it, it must, um, it must be said that there was, um, some concern, uh, within the community. In fact, uh, that, um, the original, um, development plan for this particular area did include, um, um, takeaway food services such as that of McDonald's, uh, but in a different, but in a different area and a different part of the land. And, um, and, and I think the issues that have been raised, you must be careful not to dismiss them as concerns, as, um, as, as not, um, living with concerns or not things carrying through to the nth degree in the form of deputations. Uh, yeah, a quick look at social media from relevant sites will tell you that, um, this isn't a case of, um, everyone likes the idea. And the issues really crystallized down in the end to concerns about a twenty-four by seven operation. Now, although Woolworths has a license to do twenty-four by seven, they haven't considered it viable. Uh, Coles haven't considered it viable, and they will be closing at midnight. The issues raised, um, were raised, uh, several times, and there was, the issue was raised, this issue was raised at the meeting at the manual school. I was there, uh, it was raised towards the end of the meeting, um, and, uh, and it was dealt with at that particular point in time. There was a suggestion that we should, we could, um, we could do a trial, uh, for twelve hours, uh, to midnight, uh, to a twenty-four by seven trial for six months. Um, and then just to see what issues there will arise, and that would then give us a basis. If there's some of the residents' concerns, which, um, you know, I don't think would have eventuated, but had they, it would have given an opportunity to address them and do those sorts of things. The developer was originally, uh, inclined with that because of the surety that, um, he felt and many do, that, uh, this would not be an issue because there's not an issue at the other twenty-four by seven McDonald's operating areas. However, um, he has come to the conclusion that, um, that, uh, that's not necessary because of the security and operational management plan. Um, and once again, this is largely, um, a bit of a pick and a poke. Uh, we've got some idea there of the kinds of things the general manager might do, but we don't have the detail of, um, of how they will do, well, what will happen. Um, and the need, I suspect, to review these sorts of things. But it's, um, it is a reasonable compromise for a problem that I'm not, that I don't think would exist. But if problems do arise and there are some factors, uh, which may give rise to those particular problems, and I'm more talking about antisocial behaviour. Uh, the light and the noise and those sorts of things can be assessed on site and adjustments made if necessary. But it's that security plan and the capacity to, to alter it and things that, that I would say give me a degree of comfort that the issues of twenty-four trading can be addressed. However, if those antisocial issues can't be addressed, I think, um, we're going to have to have a good hearted look at, um, what we're going to have to do about it because, um, you know, you cannot station a police officer on site twenty-four by seven. And history has shown that even when they're on site, many of the disregard or disrespect for the law, they'll, they'll do it anyway. So, um, you know, we can't guarantee those things. On balance, I think that that is a, this is a reasonable approach to those particular concerns. Um, and, uh, I'll be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman James?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also, um, I would like to thank, uh, Mr. Spanton because he actually has called upon us, or most of us anyway, to, to discuss his proposal and, uh, and I think that, that's the way to do it, to get around and, and also there's been a community consultation and there have been thirty representations. It's interesting to note that the Rosney Makers is well distanced from any of those, that's the actual operation there at Rosney, uh, in, in the mall area, is well distanced from local residences. The Sandy Bay Makers is in fact, um, in the commercial hub adjacent to a, um, a lot of other commercial buildings. And also the Bridgewater Makers, uh, and, um, and also the Brighton Makers are all fairly distanced from the local residences and so on. So this seems to be a trend away from, um, what I thought Makers is really uh, in the process of, um, trying to do, and that is keep it within a, within a, a commercial business area, away from the local residents and so on. So when we come to the performance criteria in relation on page one fifty-seven, I'll just read this. Hours of operation of a use within fifty meters of a residential zone must not have an unreasonable impact upon the residential amenity of the land in a residential zone through commercial vehicle movements, noise etcetera. This particular location, I mentioned to Mrs. Spanton, look, I've got no problems with the twenty-four hour operation. But where this is located, I do have problems with. Because why does it have to be at the furthest most point of the actual development of Coles? And within, within twenty meters, uh, sorry, um, forty-seven meters to the boundary of the nearest residential properties? That's along Pass Road and thirty meters to the boundary of the properties adjacent to the new road under construction. If it had have been located in the right corner, if you're looking at the map, which I have in front of me, which we all have in our paper, if it had have been over on the other corner, then it would have, in my opinion, been a better place to locate it because it would be opposite the, um, the health centre. And there's only approximately one residence which if you draw a straight line from that corner to where this particular location ought to be placed, then in fact you have, uh, a better means by which the local community would not be adversely affected by noise or any of those other limitations that may be placed upon them. The other factor I want to raise is that there is a, it, with Coles and there is retail and there is also staff parking at the, uh, at the rear of Coles. And it would seem to me that that could be a location, but it wasn't considered. It has to be located in this particular area. And that also raises another issue, and that is the twenty-four hour operation, seven days a week. Presumably the car park, and there's all those vacant spaces there between this, uh, proposed, um, Makers and also the development of the retail and the Coles. There is a huge, uh, uh, area there for people to gather and also mix all hours of the night because presumably it would be floodlit, or most of it, in the vicinity of Makers. And therefore you would have a, a congregation of people and by the very nature of young people wanting to be around there or it's in that vicinity, that you would, I think, find that you would have a lot of activity after hours and just people just generally mixing and socializing, etcetera. If they had have decided to either relocate their Makers as proposed to the, uh, right side of the corner, and I raised this with Mrs. Spanton, and he said there's going to be problems with cars coming in and out because there is only a left turn out or right turn in. But nevertheless, surely that could have been addressed. And there is sort of a, a capacity to have that in that's, on that, uh, car parking area, in my opinion. So look, I, I, a great Makers person, I tend to eat too much Makers. And even when, in my reservist days, we used to quick, uh, frequently. Yeah, it does, it does. So, uh, and in, nevertheless, I, I cannot support it.
Any other speakers? Uh, write a reply, uh, sorry, Alderman Kennedy?
No, 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 it's just a little bit.
Alderman Walker?
Uh, thank you, uh, your worship. Like, uh, Alderman James, I too was once young and, um, I, uh, I recall quite vividly the opening of, uh, the Rosney store in, I believe, the school of the days of nineteen ninety-one. It would be ninety-two, they're starting to, it's starting to blur. And so here we find that it's thirty years on before, um, the next one has come before council for consideration. Um, now, the youth unemployment might not quite be as high now as it was in ninety-one, but it's not great. Uh, and McDonald's are a huge employer, uh, especially first jobs and, and creating a, a work ethic and culture for people, but that's not a determining matter for this council because that's not a planning matter. This is, this is coming to us as a planning authority. And I feel slightly overly familiar with the way that McDonald's and shopping centres tend to, tend to work. Uh, a little bit of experience elsewhere, and they do tend to want the facility to be as far away from the main centre on the site as possible. And, uh, I haven't got many points on my traffic engineering degree so far, but it's, it's a pretty, pretty simple thing to understand. simple thing to understand, the car conflict that that would cause the closer it went to the main centre. So having it down the bottom, nearest the car parks that are going to be less desirable when you've got a full trolley from Coles is sensible. We look at what's mentioned with the noise mitigation and lighting concerns, and wish that other designs went to that same level that come before us as a council, but we decide not as a council. And I think the security measures should give you people some comfort. These stores do it into me twenty-four hours. I'm not aware of the secret one, Brighton, that was mentioned through this debate. Maybe I just haven't been invited, but I don't think it exists. What I would know is that, that there is actually housing quite, quite close to, quite close to Sandy Bay. In fact, you could probably throw, you know, it's, it's actually pretty close from the car park of Rosney to the adjoining, the houses just in Lawrence Hill Road as well. So I think this shopping centre is, and this precinct is going to be quite an imposito. It also means that there still remains a surplus of car parks, that's something we don't, we don't tend to hear when things come before us as well. So there's lots of positives, but most of the things that we might be patient about are not matters of planning consideration. This is, this is coming for us as a planning authority. Lots of steps have been taken, and it's recommended for acceptance or approval, and I intend to vote for approval.
Thank you. Alderman Edwards?
Very, very briefly, yeah, I'm definitely in support of this through all the prism that we have to view this stuff through. I think the concerns have been raised, consultation's been on for us, and based on the debate we had earlier, I think that's a way that you can get people on board, deal with their concerns, and then come up with an end result like this. The point about jobs, yes, is really important, obviously not something we consider, but I would say that during twenty-twenty, again, to reference the darkest days of when we were locked down, I mean, Maccas was one of the shining lights in our community. You know, it was, they were serving bread and milk. The kids who, well, they're not all kids, the people who worked there contributed as much to this city as anybody else during that time, baby bar, health, frontline health workers, but, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty, and they were all running up, and they were serving us as we all drove through. So I think in that sense it can actually provide good for the community as well, outside of the other stuff that we speak about. But just to reiterate that, yeah, the concerns about security, yes, they're true, but I think also they're dealt with, and just to again commend the process of consultation, I haven't been on this council throughout this whole process, but I have to say since I've been a part of it, the word I'll use, yes, is for us. So, thank you.
Alderman Vonnby, write a reply?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank colleagues for the contributions this evening. As Mr Spanton has said, both in public forums and on a one-on-one basis, the Gliebel Billich is intended to be a flagship property, and Maccas will be a part of that, and I think it's absolutely fantastic that we'll be able to provide such a diverse offering to the residents and rail places. I think one thing to keep in mind here, as I said in my opening remarks, McDonald's are the world's top retailer. They know how these things work. We might all have concerns, and they're quite legitimate concerns, as I also said in my remarks, but they've been adequately addressed by the world's best retailers. There will be state-of-the-art technology in place to mitigate against any and all of the concerns that have been expressed. So, Mr Mayor, with those few concluding remarks, I urge colleagues to support our office's recommendation.
So the revised recommendation, as circulated, is recommending approval subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Against, the motion is carried, and that concludes our business as a planning authority. Next item on the agenda is under governance, the quarterly report that council received for the report to the thirty-first of December. Thank you, Alderman James. Second, Alderman Kennedy. Any other speakers? Other speakers? Alderman James?
Yes, look, on page thirty-six of the quarterly report, and it refers to the mobile food business in a public places policy. An expression of interest was advertised, asking interested businesses to submit an application by their level in January twenty-twenty-one. My question through you to Mr Tui or Mr, the general manager, Mr Mayor, I'm not sure.
If you ask the question, I'll attempt to direct it in the right direction.
So would you be kind enough to seek the officer to respond to my question, please?
So with third vans, general manager in the first sentence?
Sorry, I'm unclear what the question was.
There was an expression of interest, seeking interested businesses to submit an application. Have we received applications and have we made a decision in relation to their operation within the city?
I'm not, we've received a very small number, I'm not entirely sure what the number is. Mr Tui, are you aware of that, or Miss Ellis?
We received a small number, but I have to take that on notice, that that's handled by governance at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Second question is on page thirty-seven of the quarterly report. Under operational revenue and expenditure, I quote, aggregate revenue shows at one-point-two million favourable variance compared to budget. This is being influenced by greater than forecast planning, building and plumbing applications per quarter. Supplementary rates revenue is greater than budget due to the timing of the receipt of draft and so on. So my question through you, Mr Mayor, to the CFO, is that, given that there has been a favourable variance in accordance to an increase in revenue, will that be reflected in our decision and we start debating the projected rate increase for twenty-one, twenty-two?
Through you, Mr Mayor, thank you for the question, Alderman James. To clarify, this is responding to a variance of the current year's performance. With regards to budget deliberations and rate increases for the future year, that will be a matter for council.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the quarterly reports?
Oh, sorry, no, I'll do it.
Alderman Walker?
Yes, I think it might have been the last or the quarterly report before I raised the opportunity, including the particularly detailed, concise documents, the mayoral deputations, where you deputised others to go to different events, and my recollection was you said that were going to be included or were towards being included?
The intent was to include them in the council meeting, for example, the deputy mayor's been representing there at a number of events, but I'm not aware, we're still during Covid, there hasn't been too much directed towards the other ordman at this stage.
So that will be coming as part of the quarterly report, or are you thinking that that will come?
I would expect that to come with the agenda papers for the council meeting. And so if you could note that, please, that whenever one of the ordmen that represent me, other than the deputy mayor, that that be listed as well. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, the information that's being discussed is, if you look at tonight's summary of mayoral and deputy mayoral representations, that's already included and was circulated tonight.
Right, but we want the, if other ordmen are representing, the mayor to be included as well.
That's the transparency used to.
Sure. Alderman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I refer to page twelve of the quarterly report, and the any of Clarence Committee's volunteer service, I know that there's seventy-five volunteers currently engaged in this important work, and it goes over to page thirteen, and actually puts a dollar value to the contribution made by, the important contribution made by volunteers in our community. Mr Mayor, I understand that the appreciation Christmas lunch last year because of Covid did not proceed. I'd like to just flag that I would be very keen to see that something appropriately is done this year to acknowledge the very generous contribution, the seventy-five plus volunteers made in our community, because it really is quite important, as I know you, you would have all read, Mr Mayor, and I think we ought to do something to acknowledge their contribution.
Certainly note that we'll be trying to put something on if that's all possible. There have been no other points raised on the quarterly reports, so I put the motion to be received, all those in favour. Carry unanimously, thank you. Eleven point, seven point two is that council supports a request by the city to amend the urban growth boundary. Are you moving this, Alderman Vonnby?
Certainly not, Mr Mayor. Quite the contrary.
Thank you. Well, Maura, do I have a second? Alderman James, I'll take.
And tempted as I am to include a community consultation clause, I will resist. Mr Mayor, this is, this is a classic case of the sorts of examples that are going to happen all over the place, and it's not because it's a good idea to wait for the, to do it on a policy basis. The fact is, we are now some, what, five, six years overdue for that review, and it's that five or six years, ten years overdue?
No, five years overdue, I think, it was certainly reviewed five years ago.
I hope the clock stops.
Please continue.
That's right, it's interpretation, ten years.
It's overdue for review, for five years, I think, but five or ten, ten makes it even worse. The point is, is that we are getting these sorts of things, and we will continue to get them. And it is pointless saying, oh, let's wait for the review which has finally started off, or at least a pathway, is that the word? There's steps, a pathway towards a review, in other words, we'll conduct a review to see how we're going to conduct the review. So really, these sorts of things are as a result of our failure, of the government's failure to do what they should have done, what they said they would do five or ten years ago. So we have no choice but to start responding to the pressures of housing. This is a case where it's in Hobart, and that's where, I guess, the special case can be made, that this is the only place where you're not going to get that crunch on the roads and the crunch on the southern outlet of Tasman Highway and Brookler Avenue. But, so this is a case where we're going in Hobart. Now, I know this didn't get unanimous support in Hobart, but they too recognise we cannot keep building up and up and up in Hobart. We have to have a diversity of lots, and you might hate the suburban sprawl, it saved Australia's neck in the pandemic, no doubt about that. You have a look at where it struck overseas, the more densely populated, the more severe the pandemic. So there are some really good public policy reasons why we should have backyards. So, and here's a close of it. Anyway, go on with this one, I fully support it, and I hope that they support ours in turn.
Alderman James?
Yes, look, there are very, well, the similarities between Atkinson Street and this one, in my opinion, because if you look on page two forty-five of the city planners' item number eight point one, you can see that the, the sort of orange hashed area, and also the outline of where they're proposing to or seek amendment to the urban growth boundary. So most of those services, the cul-de-sac, is obviously a typical example of Atkinson Street when we looked at it back then. So there is direct access off that cul-de-sac, I can't actually read the writing there, but nevertheless, and also to on the, on the small lot development, which butts the perimeter of the blue sort of triangular section, which is another access point, which, and by the very nature of most people considering building in Hobart, know there is a scarcity of building blocks, and that's why the majority want to come to Clarence, that's what the, the word is out in the community. So, look, this sort of makes sense to me, and I had the time, and I'm not sure who else supported the Atkinson Street, but I know that I moved it, and it was seconded, and there was some opposition, and I know colleague Alderman Vonnby is steadfast in her strategic planning, and I admire her for that because she has been consistent and persistent over the years in relation to that. But this one, I think, deserves the support of council, because it's, there are, as I mentioned, similarities, almost identical to what we did with Atkins, and look what happened there, we opened up that land, and there wasn't the controversy associated with that, because I think the majority of the people at the time were in support of it as well as the developers. I'll support the recommendation.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Edwards?
Just in light of what's happening this evening, is there any appetite to amend A two, to delete most of the words, to use the word council, and then delete everything that comes down to reiterate, they put an S in, so the point two simply becomes, council reiterates its previous request for an urgent review of the regional strategy, just to remove commentary and just make a simple point.
As second of Mr Mayor, I would be more than happy to agree to that.
A mover?
I'll take the advice of my second. No, no, it's got to be your own.
What we do need is, so what's reflected on the board there now, is that exactly what you're proposing?
Apart from the word reiterate, just reiterate, I think it's really.
Yeah, it's an S amend.
So, so the motion now reads part two, council reiterate its previous requests for an urgent review?
Yeah, just, just to.
It should be reiterate.
It should be iterates rather than reiterate. Okay, well, mover and second have adopted that, so have agreed to that, Alderman Edwards, so that now becomes a motion. Are there any other speakers? Alderman Walker?
Yeah, look, it's a planning matter in some ways, so I went and inspected the site, would be a complete fabrication for me to say. It's completely out of our municipality, and again, this is the workaround that is occurring, and it has to go to each and every council as part of the workaround. The main game is the review of the urban growth boundary. I will be supporting it, and I would make, not just for the case that it's not in my backyard, but for the other case that it is one block, it's not, it's not a hundred and forty-eight, and it's not a complete surprise to surrounding residents, or possibly even the paddy melons and all of these that are on the other side of the hillside. So it is, it is a peculiar workaround that we have to deal with, that's what it is, and we should all support it.
Okay, other speakers?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I won't be supporting it, I wouldn't have supported it, the original one, and I certainly won't be supporting the amended motion. As I've said, this is a principle, as far as I'm concerned, that we actually need to continue to request and require the state government to actually review the southern regional land use strategy. It's, depending on how you like to look at it, it's either five or ten years too late. So let's keep on requiring them to do this. If we just keep on acting in an ad hoc manner, whether it's in Clarence, whether it's in any other municipality, it's not going to happen. So let's actually be principled about this.
Thank you, Alderman Vonnby. Any other speakers? Rod Ricklin?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and firstly all, I will, I will thank Alderman Edwards, he wasn't actually at the agenda brief on Friday, so through some wonderful means of premonition, he seems to have picked up something you, Mr Mayor, raised at the briefing, so, yeah, I must say I did find those words. so, uh, yeah, I, I must say I did find those words, maybe sad, so, but enough said. Um, Mr. Mayor, the, it, it's, um, a fairly straightforward thing, but I'll just reiterate. We were correct the last time in the fact that the minister has put on forward a process, which is the one we followed on Richardson's Road, which is the one we followed at Moreton, the one we followed. It's the one Hobart City Council is following. It's the one Kingston City Council followed. So that is the process, that is the correct process, and that is why we have done what we have done. The issues about the strategic nature of this are the other issues, is the other issues. Not that the minister has commissioned it yet, he's only put out a pathway asking us, consulting with us on how to conduct our strategic review. But it's quite clear that the minister, like us, like the other city councils, understand the pressures that are going to have to go through. Now, we can either do them ad hoc or not at all. And clearly not at all is not an option. That's why you have to support this one.
Okay, so the motion is, we do support it. All those in favour? Against the motion, please carry. Moving on to Alderman's question time. There was one question on notice from Alderman Warren. Uh, there's an answer, General Manager?
To Alderman Warren? Thank you, Mayor. Um, Alderman Warren, um, provided two questions, um, and I'll answer, um, the first one. Um, I'll just give a brief summary without reading it all out. Uh, given the recent discussion in the media about, on the upcoming ferry trial, could the general manager please update council and ratepayers on the status of ferry terminal options? And with a number of options listed. Um, at this point in time, it's difficult to provide a detailed update. I'm, I've been in contact with the Department of State Growth and, um, I'm anticipating that we will have advice regarding, uh, the tender decision for a ferry operator within the next fortnight. And at that point in time, we'll have, uh, obviously detail of what's proposed. But just in terms of those four dot points of, um, existing structures and, uh, that might act as a ferry terminal, in terms of the, uh, original proposal for the Shambroad site, uh, at this point in time, I'm not aware of any proposal, uh, that that site might become used as a ferry terminal. Um, the boardwalk, um, currently under construction, um, the, that's the pier site, I understand. Uh, that's actually not designed to take boats up against it. So, uh, in terms of any proposal to use part of that would require construction by the proponent adjacent to it. And that would need to obviously satisfy engineering, um, requirements and also, uh, any marine safety requirements in terms of vessel movements. The existing ferry wharf, um, on Vic Esplanade, um, that, if it's the one I'm thinking about, that's, uh, owned and operated by federal hotels. Uh, so, uh, that, that potentially could be a site, uh, but would be, uh, would necessitate, uh, discussion between federal and a, and a potential operator. Um, and I'm not aware of any other, um, of floating ferry wharf other than the potential for something beside, uh, the pier that we're currently constructing. Uh, but again, I haven't had any details about that. Uh, in terms of the second question, could the general manager also update council and ratepayers on any discussions about provision of parking for prospective passengers or measures that might be taken to avoid, uh, suburban streets becoming the preferred parking solution? Uh, again, at this point in time, until we know, uh, what the, uh, details of a, of a potential, uh, operator are and what's proposed, I'm not really in a position to provide any detail. Uh, but what I would advise is that once that, um, that proposal is understood, we'd be looking to workshop that with Alderman, uh, in terms of not only what is proposed, but how, uh, any operating arrangements might be operated to avoid any, uh, any foreseeable issues. Um, so as soon as I've got information, I will certainly make Alderman aware of that.
Thank you. A supplementary question. Um, thank you, General Manager, that was very useful. Just one supplementary, um, that was useful to hear your detail of the potential of some of those sites. Could you also rule in or rule out the Shambroad site as a potential ferry wharf?
Um, I, I'm probably not in a position to do that. Uh, because it's a privately owned site, if there was a proposal to use that, that would involve, uh, a discussion with Shambroad uh, and the operator and obviously council and Department of State Growth uh, in the same way that, um, a proposal to utilise the federal wharf, for example, might do as well. So, uh, I can't rule it in or out, um, but, um, we'll just need to see what the proposal is once it's received.
Okay, uh, thank you, General Manager. So answers to questions, uh, from the previous council meeting are in the agenda, so we'll take those as read and move on to questions without notice, starting with Alderman Maura, oh, Alderman Chong, Alderman Maura. Alderman Yuen?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of these. Um, the first one was, um, I think quite a few people come to me who operate businesses and, uh, use Moreton Road. Um, and there's a few concerns up there about some of the parking, uh, issues, which is adding to the site issues in relation to getting in and out of some of the businesses. I'd be interested in, uh, what we're doing to investigate, uh, remedying that situation or, or moving towards some form of plan to, uh, you know, I'm pretty sure all of us would agree something needs to be done up that way. So I'd be interested to see what's happening in that space.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Uh, through, Mr. Mayor, our internal traffic working group is presently, uh, assessing the parking issues in Moreton Road and McIntyre Street. Uh, it will take some time to complete that investigation and I will advise Alderman in due course when we've completed that body of work.
And the second one, Mr. Mayor?
That's all right.
Um, I went to the LGAT conference, um, up in Longtest last week and there was an interesting discussion up there about resource sharing between councils, uh, and even one that chaired a GM. So I don't know, I'm not suggesting that we need to share our GM. Um, but, uh, it was interesting to see some of that sort of stuff, you know, help individual councils, you know, do things a little bit better. Also tell them we've got an obligation in some of our smaller councils to look at ways of being able to help them as well. So I'd be interested to see what, whether we're actually doing stuff at the moment or whether we've actually got that on the table to look at how we can help in that space moving forward.
Um, yes, um, thank you for the question. Um, council at this point in time is involved in a range of, uh, activities where we resource share or work collaboratively with our, uh, neighbouring councils. Uh, so the examples, uh, for it would be, uh, in terms of the Dog Pound, um, we have a long-term agreement in place with Hobart Glenorky Brighton, uh, regarding the Dog, Dog's Home and how that operates. Uh, Copping Waste, um, disposal site, uh, is another good example that, uh, is a collaboration between ourselves, Kingborough, Sorrel and Tasman. Um, recycling is another good example, uh, in terms of, uh, a Southern Tasmanian approach to recycling. We, uh, work collaboratively between the 12 southern councils to negotiate an agreement on common terms. Um, we, um, work, um, regularly with other councils, uh, to tender for, uh, road resealing. Um, and sometimes that's also facilitated through the LGAT. Um, and we are finding, um, that on a more frequent basis because of the, uh, Greater Hobart Act and the city deal, that the four metro councils are working collaboratively together. So, uh, probably the, the most pertinent, pertinent example of that at the moment is the initial work for the development of the metro plan, which will feed into the review of the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy. Uh, the four metro councils, uh, have, uh, committed resources to that and that work is well underway. Um, probably the other point that I would make is that from time to time, we do assist our neighbouring councils, uh, when, uh, we have resource capacity, uh, and, uh, and they need some help. So it's, uh, it's something we've done periodically, uh, but it's not a common and ongoing thing, um, in comparison to a couple of councils in the north that have, um, ongoing permanent arrangements in terms of resource sharing. Uh, Latrobe Candish is probably a good example there.
Alderman Ken, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, just referring back to the, I hope I didn't miss anyone asked this while I ducked out. Um, the memo we received on the 24th of February with the regards to the interim planning directive, number four exemptions, which took effect on the 22nd of February. Um, I just wondered if we'd had much feedback on that and if there's actually a transitional period in place for those people that may have submitted development applications, say, a couple of days before.
Mr. Lovell, who have your answer there?
Through, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe we've had any feedback at this point. Um, and, and there's also no transitional arrangements. It comes into effect on the day it came into effect. However, we've done our best to inform people that we deal with of the change.
One more? Well, I go there, Mr. Lovell, can I just ask how that, um, informational consultation was actually got out to the wider community?
Uh, there was no consultation by the state government. It was their initiative, so it wasn't a matter for the council to consult on. Um, so, uh, so there's, there's, well, there's been no community consultation.
Thank you.
Alderman Edwards?
Uh, yeah, just one for perhaps Mr. Tui, but, um, I just wondered if we could have an update or at least, um, a bit of an idea of how things went with the smoke free around Belraye Oval during the summer. Obviously it was sort of, perhaps it was like a good time to have it coming with smaller crowds, so just an update on how that program went.
Mr. Tui, have we got any feedback there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the feedback is generally very positive all round. We've actually done a detailed report, which I can actually circulate to the Alderman.
Yes, please.
Oh, just one more. I just, uh, what, what's the process, uh, in terms of if, um, uh, Alderman was to disclose confidential information or confidential discussions to the public? Is that, is that just done through the code of conduct or is that something the council takes action on?
Well, I asked the general manager to expand on this, but it could be a statutory problem as well.
Yes, you can, um, this, my, my response might be a little bit simplistic, but in broad terms, uh, there are two avenues. It could be a code of conduct issue or it could be a complaint directly to the director of local government, uh, who has the power under the act to investigate and make any necessary referrals. And the ultimate referral is it could go off to, uh, the DPP if the matter was serious enough to be investigated and prosecuted.
Alderman Walker?
Yes, thank you. It was, uh, nearly 18 months ago, a notice of motion that I brought on about, uh, red sports was passed by council. I've really received no feedback other than to say that the waste body that we were going to get involved in discussions doesn't really exist. Um, I'd like to again get a further update or any potential momentum around this, especially in light of the fact that, uh, with a waste levy coming into place, there's going to be, uh, far more likelihood of illegal dumping increasing across, um, private state and local government.
Mr. Graham?
Uh, through, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, the notice motion referred to, for that to be referred to the STCA's Southern Waste Group, which has since folded. Uh, the new Southern Areas, um, Waste Group, um, is working on strategic, um, items, uh, at the moment. Um, the, I went to information session on the waste levy at the moment, which will be coming to a council workshop, um, to explain. And, um, certainly aspects of illegal, um, dumping is, will, will need to be considered in the future, how this is managed through the waste levying.
Thank you.
Okay, and my second question is one that I actually asked last meeting during the midst of the council motion and it was put sideways or kind of, um, deferred as being somewhat erroneous. I don't think that it was, so I'm going to ask it again in this forum. And that again relates to the extension for Kang, of the permit for Kangaroo Bay that this council granted in 2019. The question is this, at that time, uh, were there any impediments that would have stopped that council or this council from actually exercising the buyback clause?
Uh, sorry, Alderman Walker, can you confirm, just so I'm clear, which, uh, which decision that was that you're referring to?
Uh, in October of 19, not 20, 20, you'll recall the motion came before us and it was a.
So it's the, the first extension?
But the first extension was granted in October of 2019, when there was no COVID or any other, um, force majeure events.
Um, my recollection was that that, say, extension was triggered by, um, the issue with TAFE withdrawing. Um, so, um, like the most recent consideration, that the issue would be whether that would be regarded as a force majeure issue and we can debate whether that would have or not. Um, but I'll, I'll address the question in two parts. If it wasn't regarded as a force majeure issue, uh, so within the control of, of Shambroad, in other words, then, uh, it would have been open to council to, uh, to initiate the buyback. If it was legally regarded as a force majeure issue, then no, we would have been in the circumstance that we have recently found ourselves, uh, required to provide an extension to comply with the contract terms.
Has, has or has not the force majeure, um, component that came into place been put largely around COVID causing difficulties arranging a contract rather than it being difficult in general?
Um, so the, the issue, um, if I can answer it this way, is that at each point in time when council receives a request for extension, council needs to consider that extension in, in the context of the circumstances present at that point. So you aren't able to be reflective back on past history. It's about what are the circumstances that give rise to that particular request?
I, 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 I have no recollection of force majeure being at any time mentioned at that time and I, I don't believe that that answers giving me clarity. I'm going to have to work out ways of asking it again.
If I can add my perception to yours, that the question of force majeure was never put to us last time as a reason why we should extend it. I, I think that, uh, it was just the mood of the council of the day that it should be granted because they wanted to see it go ahead. That was my perception at the time.
Can I see a disappointed clarification?
Pardon me?
A disappointed clarification?
Sure.
I, I think we're sort of dancing around the issue, which was, did we have to come up with reasons for refusing the application for extension? Of course, in October 19, because the, the contract says, and it's been told us a hundred times, we can't unreasonably refuse the extension. So before we got into buyback, we needed to come up with reasons for not extending. And I think that would be the critical issue.
It, it wasn't counterintuitive at the time. I, I think as a result of, uh, workshops and discussions, council was of a mood to extend it, as I recall. And so the issue of reasons, the contrary, didn't come up, but I.
No, but I, I think the point is that there needed to be reasons not to extend.
Uh, in that context, it's probably best that I take that question on notice and look at the actual words of the contract because it will, uh, in my mind, without the contract in front of me, I need to have a look at what the words of the two relevant clauses say. So it's very clear that the clause 6A, which is the force majeure clause, includes requirements regarding reasonable consideration. Um, I haven't got to the front of my mind what, uh, I think it's clause 6.3 says in terms of a specific wording, uh, because I haven't had to think about that for quite a period of time, a couple of years.
If I could add to that, if, uh, in reviewing it, you could look at the officers' report for that particular decision as well to get the context around it.
Mr. Mayor, for a last point of clarification, I, my interpretation of Alderman Walker's question, it's only because we're at the moment now, it was about buyback and whether buyback was an option in 2019, am I correct?
That is the fundamental answer.
Yeah, we're all out of shop here. It was a pretty straightforward question, I thought.
Look, um, thank you, Alderman Blomley. Uh, we'll take it on notice and see if we can provide the clarity you're looking for. Alderman Merta? Alderman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Mayor, I understand at least with your negotiations between council and the Rokeby Neighbourhood Centre have been on foot for some time now. Can you please provide an update as to where this negotiation is going to happen?
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm happy to provide an update on that. Uh, we've been negotiating with the Roke, Rokeby Neighbourhood Centre for well over two years at this point in time. Their lead.
Their lease expired, coming up for three years ago. So between two to three years actively negotiating in an environment where the lease was continuing at will. I unfortunately had to provide instructions to officers in the last couple of weeks to provide a 14-day notice period to the Rokeby Neighbourhood Centre, that if they weren't able to bring themselves to conclude the lease negotiation, then we would actively consider termination of the existing lease. Over the period of the negotiation, we've had a number of issues in terms of the way that negotiation has been conducted that have left us incredibly dissatisfied with the position that we're in. And obviously, it's a very serious issue for us to take the action that we've contemplated. And it's only as a last resort. Ultimately, if we can find a solution, we'd be happy to do that. But after well over two years' worth of negotiation, it was time to say enough.
Mr. Mayor, I thank Mr. Nelson for that comprehensive answer. My second question is also to do with that part of the world, one of the part of our city. That is following the 2019 severe weather event that tore off the roof of the Kermanale change rooms, Kermanale Oval change rooms. I'm just keen to understand, and obviously, as we'd be aware, the Rokeby Neighbourhood Club has been forced as of other users in that facility there to use temporary, shipping containers as temporary accommodation. Can you please indicate, Mr. Mayor, where council's at with replacing those facilities?
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We are still in negotiations, we're dealing with our insurance broker to deal with the insurance company on what is a possible payout in terms of that. This has been taking almost 18 months, but we're still involved in those negotiations. Council can be informed that we were unsuccessful with the state government fund, which we, council recommended, or we considered a workshop and took a direction to put that in as a grant opportunity. So officers are looking at what possible budget considerations we can put to council to consider in 21, 22 for replacement of the containers.
Can I maybe add some further information to that? The replacement of that building, so there is a temporary building in place and that's been dealt with as part of the insurance arrangements. The Sport and Recreation Committee has been actively looking at this project amongst the list of other projects and actively considering the long-term issues associated with that site. Those issues are complex and I don't want to put words in Alderman Ewington's mouth and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but certainly there is an intention to have a full and frank discussion about those buildings and that project as part of the budget process this year.
Mr. Mayor, a supplementary remark in terms of that answer. I thank Mr. Nelson and Mr. Graham for their responses. I understand that the Rokeby Neighbourhood Club, which as we know is a sporting club, a great sporting club in a disadvantaged community, has been dealt such a devastating blow. We're charged now at least $10 to use the shipping containers. Is that something the council would even consider, look at waiting?
Thank you. Mr. Graham may have some further details, but it's, as I understand it, that's an amount that comes out of the fee schedule. And I'm unclear as to what discretion we have around that. Mr. Graham, you might have some further information?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As the general manager advised, it's, the fees are set by council through the fees and charges. It's a discretion on by council if it would like to waive that charge.
Alderman Peters?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate Mr. Graham's responses there because I'm a bit annoyed about the $10 charge. I really am. But anyway, look, a person lost their wallet down one of the, I'll use rainwater drains in Beaufort Street. They tried to get there, but they realised the grate is locked, is locked down. And it'd been a weekend, had no idea who has the key. It never was council or whoever. Can someone please tell me if that happens? They're lucky because they can't have got a coat hang and got it out. But who would have a key to those?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If it's a storm or a grate, I would assume council would have a key for that and our outside hours work could be contacted in terms of releasing the grate or swimming in the dirt.
Thank you. Alderman James?
Oh, yes, I have two questions. Firstly, this council, in my opinion, made a landmark decision last year regarding the local provision schedule. So my question through you to Mr. Lovell, where are we at with that? And given that, I think there is the public hearings coming up shortly, you could provide us with an update on where we are with the local provision schedule this council clearly endorsed back early last year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Please to say that the hearing stage was completed some months ago. There are some delays for information that the TPC has requested. The most important one of those relates to information from the Hobart Airport in relation to its noise exposure area and the matter of that, to the satisfaction of the commission. So hopefully that won't be too long in the conclusion.
Thank you. And my second question is that I have been advised that the public pier will cost about 2.5 million. And having said that, my question through you to Mr. Graham, will that be, will the contingency provisions be applied in relation to kicking up the variance?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As I advised previously, we're still waiting on the resolution of the claims through the contract. So when that matter has been resolved and we approach the pier, we'll have a true understanding of the financial status of that and I will provide advice to council at that time.
A supplementary, Mr. Mayor, is it true that the 2.5 million is the cost that has occurred to date and that there will be an approach for a variation to obviously increase that to meet the contingency factor?
Through you...
Do you please confirm this, 2.5 million?
Oh, through, Mr. Mayor. I don't know what the actual costs are to date. So we would have received a client last claim, would have been in January. And I don't know what the true costs are today. I can inform council in terms of what's been claimed as of the end of January.
I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. Alderman Warren?
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you for the package of information that we've received this evening. But I question whether the little plastic powder sleeve is necessary? Because I'm getting quite a collection of things. And I wonder with the agreement of my fellow organist, if we can say that this is an unnecessary use of plastic? If we can cut down...
It is an option to leave it on the day.
But is it recyclable plastic? Or are you just saying that it could be used? I just wonder whether it's necessary at all?
That's a reasonable question, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we can have a vote on whether we want plastic around the table with our handouts or not. On the call to motion on notice.
An answer.
It's a matter for council, Alderman James. That brings us to the end of the open session of council. At this stage, can I thank the members of the public that have stayed with us until this point in time and ask if the fee would be turned off?